and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Thank you for our families as we prepare to honor our mothers and fathers in the next few weeks. Give everyone in our country the chance to experience family love, family discipline, role modeling, mentoring, teaching, pride, tradition, honor, and self-respect. Many of the current societal problems come from a poor, dysfunctional, or nonexistent family life. Thank you for what we have and for people that don't have family structure. Give other acquaintances the opportunity to provide these traits that may cause issues otherwise in their lives. Bless all the existing parents, grandparents, and other relatives who have brought our local community to the high level of desirability and prosperity and enjoyment we all appreciate and have for Buncombe County. Help us to assume our current place in making Buncombe County a place that each one of us can thrive, get a good education, find a good job, and be successful as that term is defined for each one of us. Thank you for today as we appreciate our parents, families, and future actions in this wonderful place we call home. Amen. Our first order of the -- well, we're going to do the ethics reminder. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Commission, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, and to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? If none, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract that may come before us tonight? Hearing none, I make the finding that there are no conflicts, and all board members have an obligation and duty to vote. Before we do public comment, we do have a birthday on our midst. Vice Chair Boucher is going to hit the big sixth decade, so I would like us to sing "Happy Birthday" to her.
Oh, my goodness, there we go.
I will start. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Joe. Boucher.
Happy birthday to you.
Let's give him up. Sixty years. Thank you, Joe. Now, we're on to public comment. The time limit for any comment before the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment should address the entire board. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and be respectful of everyone in the room, whether you agree with their opinions or not. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting, and the commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board. Tonight, we will be having several public comments, public hearings separately for matters as we bring them up, including the Blue Ridge Parkway Resolution, the air pollution resolution, the sales revenue resolution, and the resolution about art, history, and culture in Buncombe County. I would ask that any folks that are here to talk about those areas wait until we get later on the agenda when they come up for discussion and resolution. Based on that, does anyone have any public comment on any other matter that we want to hear from you? Yes, ma'am. Let's see, we got the front row here. I'll go with you, ma'am, on the front row. You, third row down, will be next, and who else? You can start walking up, that's good. And you, sir, will be number three. If y'all want to come on and sit in the front row in the first three lines there, that would be great, first three seats. And if you'll give your name and where you're from, so we can know who you are and where you live.
I'm Connie Colback from Weaverville, 100 Dogwood Drive in Weaverville. I just want to bring attention to this article from the Mountain Express called "Boon or Bane", it's about the manufactured homes question. According to the article, about fifty or eighty percent of the county is already open to the installation of manufactured homes, so I don't understand why the big necessity to have them also in R1 and R2. I love the euphemism of manufactured homes. It's what we always called trailers or mobile homes, double wide, single wide, whatever you call them, they're still brought in on wheels. The first argument for them was for affordable housing. But few people looking for affordable housing can't afford that. Remember, one, they have to have the land, and then they have to go with a high interest rate that's more than triple our current mortgage rate, and they depreciate as quickly as a car. This article shows that the push has morphed from a pure emphasis on affordable housing to giving people choice. Another euphemism. It sounds like a political campaign. When the language starts twisting like that, it's a sure sign of desperation. But anyone who looks into the quality of the construction and the financing for manufactured homes would never make that choice if they're looking beyond a few years. It's still really temporary housing. My son bought three acres out in the country that had a manufactured home on it, a new one, fairly new one. How long do you think the roof lasts? They're engineered for a certain amount of load, so you can't add too much weight to the roof, and the manufacturers have to make sure the whole entire structure is lightweight for weight restrictions going down the road. So all materials have to be lightweight, and they're not intended to last forever. And the final argument for it is the green case for zero construction waste. And I'm quoting here from the article. "They're energy efficient. When you're done, there's only a couple of garbage bags of waste." Terrific. "But that home has not created a single construction job, has not improved the neighborhood, and it will bring down the values of already existing homes." Just a final comment, if green is going to be the new talking point for the manufactured homes, I think we should start considering yurt or tent living. It doesn't get greener than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colback. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ken Yant. I'm from the Reams Creek Valley area, and I, too, am going to talk about the manufactured homes. I've worked in the affordable housing field for the past 25 years. I moved from Asheville to Atlanta and was involved with over 1,000 units that we demolished and redeveloped as affordable housing. I think there are a lot of other opportunities for the board to look at as far as affordable housing. Bond initiatives, low-income housing tax credits are just a couple of ways to do that. But giving the developer incentive to develop affordable housing, I think, is the better way to go. We spend a lot of time working on our homes to improve them and hopefully to see an appreciation in the value. I would hate to see the Board of Commissioners working against us to cause a loss in value for our homes. So I would urge you to look at other avenues for affordable housing. I do a lot of inspections in Buncombe County, both mortgage, insurance, home inspections, draw inspections. So I drive around the county a lot, and I see a disproportionate number of mobile homes that are falling into disrepair. They're not maintained. They don't have the longevity that a typical home would have. So again, I would encourage you to really look at some other avenues and maybe even solicit public comments about this. You might be surprised at what kind of feedback you get for affordable housing. I think the need is there. I just don't see this as the proper way to fulfill that need. Again, there's a lot of open area in Buncombe County that could be used for the mobile homes if that was your desire. I think that you need to protect the people that have come here and invested a lot in their homes and not detract from that. And ultimately, if you start putting mobile homes in those areas, I think you're going to see a decrease in revenue, tax revenue, from those homes, because I would certainly fight, if they were to put a mobile home, I would hope that they could use that as a comp and adjust my income taxes. So please consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Yant. Yes, sir. Who wants to speak after this? You'll be next. Who wants to speak after this lady? You in the about fifth row, you can come on up, and Mr. Yelton will be next. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir, you'll be after those two individuals. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Mark Manuel. I'm from Black Mountain, and I have become concerned about the proposed construction of a $6 million-plus gun range for our law enforcement personnel. I think it's a poor idea on many levels. Number one, currently, officers are traveling to Madison County and receiving the pistol and rifle training as required for accreditation. I have not seen anything in writing from Madison County or their commissioners requesting a change to this. From what I have heard, they welcome us training up there because we help defray some of their costs of the range. If they really do not want us up there training, they should put that in writing and make it very clear, and then as citizens, maybe we could support the gun range a little bit more. Secondly, if we were to build a new gun range, and it does not allow rifle training, our officers will still have to leave the county for their rifle training. So we could end up paying for more travel anyway, and the number of officers requesting rifle training could increase. Another point is, a new gun range sort of adds to the further militarization of our police forces. This can seriously undermine some of the public's support for law enforcement. Our main law enforcement goals should be to protect and serve citizens, not to be sharpshooters. Lastly, and most importantly, it's a waste of money to spend $6 million on a gun range when the community has so many other needs. Instead, we could spend the money on non-lethal training for law enforcement, or affordable housing, or better yet, let's give a raise to our law enforcement officers. As citizens, we have to distinguish when we balance our household budgets between wants and needs. We may want something, but if we can't afford it, we can't do it. And the gun range is a want. It's not a need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Yes, ma'am.
My name is DeeDee Stiles, and I live in Swananoa. I, too, want to talk about the issue with the mobile homes and the trailers. And one of the things that frequently comes up in that discussion is that the people who already live in R1 and R2 don't want trailers in their neighborhood because it detracts from the investment that they have made in their property. And I can certainly appreciate that. But there are a lot of other people who have invested other things besides money in their property. For my own experience, my family has lived on that property since the 1920s. We've built barns, we've built a house, we've put in orchards, we've worked on our road, and we've maintained our property, not only for ourselves, but also for the birds, the bears, the foxes, all those other creatures who need a place to live. Now, and I would like to say that there's more ways to measure a person's investment in their property than with dollar signs. A lot of the older people in our community have invested a lot of their time and a lot of their knowledge in making their property great. But then, along comes somebody, like they did in Lidle Cove where I live, and build a high-end house just up on the mountain above you. The old people who live there have built their homes in the lower part of the cove where it's flatter, and I think that's more common for older homes. The high-end homes are up on the mountain. And the first thing that happened when that happened was that the property values went up. And if you own enough land for a nice farm and an orchard, all of a sudden, your property tax takes a giant jump. And some older people on fixed incomes are not able to make that kind of payment, and who have had to sell off all, or part of their land to people who may, where it used to be a big pasture with fence rows, now it's a development with lots of houses. And the fence rows are gone, where all the tohees and the wood thrushes and the other native birds used to build their nests. All that kind of, the swamp part where the frogs, wild frogs, used to lay their eggs, that's all gone. And all of a sudden, your farming neighborhood has changed because the people who invested their time and their energy and their labor, they have lost their land completely, not just part of their investment, and they could still live there, but they've lost their home. They have to move away. And so my comment is to please try to look not only at the investment people have made in their land in money, but also investment that they've made in time and energy. And if you are willing to have a special area where low-income people can't have their houses, I would like to see a special area where high-end people can't have their houses and protect our investment.
Okay.
One high-end house can ruin a whole neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Yes, sir. And who wants to speak after Mr. Yelton? Anybody want to speak? Yes, sir, black shirt, you'll be after Mr. Yelton. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I'm here to represent the Big Ivy Community Center.
Yes, sir. And what's your name?
I'm Brandon Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
Again, the north end of the county, the Big Ivy Community Center is a nonprofit that has two applications before the board for funding. One for general organizational needs and structural rehabilitation, the other for Buncombe County Health and Human Services Connections, which the board is, the Buncombe County, our board in Barnidgeville, the Big Ivy has seen grow and really do good in that community. We've got people from as far away as Weaverville and Flat Creek, Jupiter, that's coming and using that as a, you know, as a good way of getting information and letting us direct them to Buncombe County Health and Human Services. So that program's really taken off. Again, I just wanted to touch on the applications we put in for. We asked for an increase in funds. We've had a dramatic increase in use, in visitor use. So our infrastructure's old. The community center was built, and it started out as a CCC camp, so it's been there for a long time. The infrastructure, the plumbing, the electrical, a lot of that stuff is deteriorating, so we did ask for an increase to bring that stuff up to par as our visitation increases. The heritage of these little rural communities, it means a lot to the people that's out there. So again, I just ask that you look at these applications and do your fairness with it. Thank you.
Mr. Hensley, Mayor Manheimer and I went out for your fundraiser a couple weeks ago, and she was very impressed with it, I'll tell you. That was real treat for her and her husband.
Y'all come back out.
Yes, sir, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Yelton?
I'm Yelton, Jupiter, North Carolina, and my mother used to work at that CC camp in the summer, and I happen to have a metal pitcher that came from there, and I have one of those real thick glasses that the government purchased back then. They're about that tall, because that's all they could give the workers, and they're about that thick. What they bought back then lasted. Dave, you throw a curve to me every time. I've got about seven items listed right there that I wanted to cover. They're all important. But what's happened today is something that I want to address very seriously. First and foremost, I've brought this up before. You need to come in here and test your mics, because during the pre-meeting, and I can't hear a word you're saying. And when I can't hear what you're saying, what my little pea brain thinks is you don't want me to hear what you're saying, and I don't think that's the case. I just think you need an lesson in how to use the microphone, and some of your staff needs to learn when they speak to use the microphone. So I'm going to caution you on that, because it does not look good. Now, I know I'm getting old, my hearing's getting bad, but it ain't that bad. Secondly, I can remember a time when this board was televised. Then I can remember a time when it wasn't televised. And when you came on as chair, that's the first act you did, was go ahead and start televising the meetings. But I also remember a time, David, that every new item on the agenda, they would take public comment on it before it was voted on. And I'd like to suggest to your staff, to your legal staff, and each of you commissioners, think about that. If nothing else, just limit it to, you know, 10 comments or something like that, so that we would know when we check the agenda on the Internet that we can come and speak on that issue. And finally, I want to speak about the mobile home issue. I talked to a millionaire this week that got his start in a mobile home. He bought it for $2,700 and sold it for $6,700. I would like for you to drive out Jupiter Road sometime when you're going to Barnsville and look at the vacant houses sitting there, rotting down. It's not just mobile homes that drive the price of the community down. It's the houses that puts the junk in the front yards and the old lawn mowers in the front yards. And you have the laws on your books to stop that, and I suggest that you look at how to make mobile homes affordable and attractive rather than restricting them. I think that's a very valid option, and I think it's going to require controlling people a little bit more that they don't like. But I don't like that house right next to me just sitting there vacant for five years, the roof rotting down, water running out the side, and the yard getting this tall before it's mowed. That hurts me just as bad as a well-trimmed, nice, neat mobile home sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Who else wants to be heard at public comment? I believe this gentleman's next, and who wants to speak after him? Okay. We will have public comments on many of the items that are before us today, but... Yes, sir.
I'm going to read from an article. I'll tell you...
What's your name, where you're from?
Gary Colback from Weaverville.
Thank you, Ms. Colback.
Thank you very much, sir. Clayton loan to Dorothy Mansfield, disabled Army veteran in North Carolina who lost her previous home to a tornado in 2011 includes key features that Buffett condemned. Mansfield had a lousy credit score of 474, court records show. Although she had seasonal and part-time jobs, her monthly income often consisted of less than $700 in disability benefits. She had no money for a down payment when she visited Clayton Homes in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Vanderbilt, one of the Clayton's lenders, approved her $60,000, 20-year loan to buy a Clayton home at 10.13% annual interest rate. She secured the loan with two parcels of land that her family already owned, free and clear. The dealer didn't request any documents to verify Mansfield. Income or employment records show. Mansfield's monthly payments of $673 consumed almost all her guaranteed income. Within 18 months, she was behind on payments, and Clayton was trying to foreclose on her home and the land. Now, I want to give this here, one more statement here. Concerning, there's a fictional film with George Bailey. He ran a modest building and loan company to give poor families affordable frame homes. He was up against Mr. Potter, who was trying to profit from the poor, Bedford Falls, New York. I was born, by the way, up in Westchester County where Bedford Hills is, which is what Bedford Falls represented. The 1946 production was titled "It's a Wonderful Life," the film the industry considered the most powerful ever made. Fifty-nine years later, it is still one of the most popular films shown at Christmas, but because of the greed of Mr. Potter, not because of the greed of Mr. Potter, but because of the hope of a better life provided by George Bailey that allowed people to pull themselves up to avoid the likes of Potter. And I want to also give this, another issue very similar to this, I want to pass this out. May I do that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please, here you go. What you're going to see there is a picture of three homes, and those are several homes, and those homes are quarter, approximately half a mile north of me. And you will see that there's a probably $600,000 home with low-income homes below it where a good rain could wash them out, like we had with the hurricanes a few years ago, because they're right down a gully. And then up there on top is a condo. And then the bottom little picture there shows basically how nice the condos look. And what I'm saying here is that it looks like a mishmash of different homes that nobody's thought anything about. I mean, you've got low-income with a $600,000 home, and you've got condos. You take a mobile home, you throw them out there, and they hope they grow. And I just think that what you maybe need is to bring somebody in from the outside to make suggestions on how to solve that.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Colback.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your hearing, and happy birthday to you.
All right. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am, third row, fourth row. Anybody want to speak after this lady?
Hi, my name's Sarah Faulkner. I'm from Weaverville. I'm here to urge you not to lift the ban on mobile homes in R1 and R2 zoning districts. I say mobile homes specifically because modular homes are currently allowed in R1 and R2 districts. Both mobile and modular homes are defined as manufactured homes. The difference is significant when it comes to loan financing. In an article entitled "Mobile Homes Boone or Bane" published last week in the Mountain Express, the question discussed was, "Are mobile homes really affordable?" I spoke with a loan officer at a local credit union this morning to educate myself on the current loan structure for mobile homes in Buncombe County. She stated that most lenders do not offer conventional loans on mobile homes, and they, as a credit union, will offer loans only on double and triple wides with a permanent foundation and do not offer loans for single-wide mobile homes. In addition, she said the maximum loan term for a double wide or triple wide on a permanent foundation is 15 years in comparison to 30 years, and the base interest rate is double that of a loan on a stick-built or modular. Currently, the baseline for mobile homes is 6.875%, as opposed to 3.875%. For example, a $100,000 loan at 3.875% APR for 30 years has a monthly payment of $470, whereas a $100,000 loan at 6.875% APR for 15 years has a monthly payment of $892. It was discussed in the Mountain Express article that these short-term loans are only for homes cited on rental or leased property. But after discussing this with the local financial institution, the higher-interest, short-term, conventional loan structure applies to individuals who are seeking to purchase a mobile home and have it installed on their own land. The professional opinion of the loan officer was that buyers would be better off purchasing a stick-built or modular home as they typically increase in value, whereas mobile homes decrease in value at a much faster rate. If I may, I would like to give each of you a copy of the Mountain Express article for your review. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment before we get started with our regular agenda? Any other public comment before we get started with our regular agenda? All right, then our first order of business would be to approve the agenda. During the pre-session, we have altered the order of our agenda tonight, pulling up the Blue Ridge Parkway report and resolution, and the proposal to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the WNC Regional Air Quality Board. They will be the first two action items, and then we will follow the agenda, I think, as we have discussed. Is there a motion to follow the agenda, which would also include approving the consent agenda as it's presented?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner Jones. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we will find the, we will follow the agenda as we have modified it by consent. Our first order of business will be Motorcycle Awareness Month, and we have Vice Chair Belcher, and I'd call up Mr. Martin and the Concerned Bikers Association. Thank you for being here again.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. The County of Buncombe proclamation of Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas Asheville and Buncombe County motorcyclists have banded together to actively promote a more positive image of motorcyclists, promote fair motorcycle legislation, and ensure motorcyclists' freedom, and whereas these motorcyclists are also working to eliminate prejudicial attitudes towards motorcyclists and promote participation in public service programs, and whereas these motorcyclists organize and participate in motorcycle safety, education, and rider training programs, and public awareness programs, and whereas the Buncombe County Chapter of Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina has requested that the month of May be Proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month, and whereas this board feels that it is in the best interest of all citizens to promote motorcycle safety, awareness, and to foster a sense of brotherhood and sisterhood among all users of our county roadways. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that the month of May 2015 be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month in Buncombe County, that all citizens of Buncombe County are hereby encouraged to join area motorcyclists in an effort to improve traffic safety and increase motorcycle awareness, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Adopted this the fifth day of May 2015, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by David Gant, Chairman.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
My name is Jody Martin, I'm the Legislative Coordinator for the Buncombe County Chapter of the Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina, and we'd certainly like to thank you for this. The Buncombe County, the Concerned Bikers Association, we work for motorcyclists. We're talking about motorcycles, not, as we call ourselves bikers, but in various different ways, including what we call motorcycle awareness. At first thought, you think, well, yeah, I know what a motorcycle is, I know they're out there, but, and motorcycle usage in this country, in the United States, has really boomed in the last couple of decades. You may have realized that they just seem to be everywhere, but fact of the matter is that compared to some other parts of the world, where motorcycles are just almost the majority of the vehicles on the road, they're everywhere you go, you're driving traffic in town, there's motorcycles. You live every day around motorcycles. If you're going to drive an automobile, you're going to drive amongst motorcycles. It's not that way here in our country, it never has been. We are still a very small percentage of the driving population, so it just has not, up till now, it just does not sink into the minds of the average American driver to think about those motorcycles out there, because there's only really, percentage-wise, there's very few of us there. And it brings about issues that we see in this country. But we talk about, so we talk about motorcycle awareness, and we, our, the Buncombe County Chapter, we do things to try to promote that. We talk, we go to the schools and teach to the driver's ed classes. We have actually a little one-hour program they present to the new drivers, trying to bring them onboard as a new driver to understand that you're driving, even if you're driving an automobile, you're driving among other automobiles, motorcycles, bicycles, other things you have to think about besides just automobiles. And we try to talk about, you know, people think, well, if you're driving down the road, a motorcycle only takes up a small percentage of his lane, you know, it's not nearly as big as a car. Well, I could just, even like, be on the interstate, well, I could just kind of pass him there, I don't have to get all the way over into the left lane, he's only, only taking up that much space, you know? Or if you've come up to an intersection there with a red light, and there's a motorcycle in front of you, he's waiting for the light to go straight through the intersection, but you're wanting to make a right turn, so, well, I could just kind of squeeze between the motorcycle and the curb, and get on up there and make my right turn, and go on about my business. But I like to tell the kids, I talk about that, and I say, now, if you're in traffic and you're, you know, and we all are, we're trying to get to work, we're trying to get to wherever we're going, and we're trying to squeeze these little, couple of seconds out of our commute, and if you're in your automobile and you're trying to squeeze in somewhere, and you, it happens, you may, you rub that automobile next to you, and you put a scratch on the paint, you know what I mean? But if you're doing the same thing on a motorcycle, and you're kind of squeezed by him, and you rub, and you put a scratch on his kneecap, that's a difference. That's a huge difference. And that's why we talk about this, and that's why we talk, when we talk about motorcycle awareness, we want, we want people to say, not just, yeah, I know there's motorcycles out there, but think when you're out there and you see a motorcycle on the road, that just because he's taken up a very small portion of the lane, that if you're going to pass somebody, you have to get completely into the other lane and go around. If you're, you know, these type of things, if you were just, if we can get our automobile drivers to just to think for a second, when they see somebody out there on a motorcycle or on a bicycle or pedestrian is about to, needing to cross the road, hesitate for amendment. Give them just a little bit more space, just a little bit more consideration, and it would just make the, make our day for all of us go so much more smoothly, just, and that's why we want to thank the Commissioners for partnering us, with us, on this effort to get this word out. That's, that is what we mean by motorcycle awareness, and we do thank you for helping us with this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you for your good work. Next, I'll recognize Commissioner Jones is going to give Foster Parent proclamation, and if the parents can come up. We'll start with Angie, and you'll introduce them, I think. Thank you. Not yet, she'll call you up. My bad.
Going to get the microphone real close. So, my faith has taught me that families are determined by love, not DNA, and this is what I believe. So it is a great honor to do this proclamation for foster care and foster care families today. So, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I think we're going to meet some living, breathing angels in our community. Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community, and whereas in Buncombe County, the lives of hundreds of children and families are disrupted every year by crisis or conflicts in their homes, and whereas in Buncombe County, there are over 300 children and youth in foster care, care that provides a safe, secure, and stable home, along with the compassion and nurture of a foster family, and whereas foster families in Buncombe County open their homes and hearts to children whose families are in crisis, play a vital role, helping children and families heal and reconnect, and launch children into successful adulthood, and whereas foster families are an invaluable resource and perform an extraordinary service by working in partnerships with agencies to nurture children and provide an opportunity for healthy growth and development. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that the month of May 2015 be proclaimed Foster Care Month in Buncombe County, and that all citizens be urged to recognize the important role foster parents play in the life of our community, and be urged to volunteer their talents and energies on behalf of children in foster care. This proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Chairman, I'd like to move adoption of this proclamation.
Been a motion, is there? I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
And Angie, I'd like to give this proclamation to you, and I know you've wanted to introduce us to some other folks in our community.
Thank you. Okay, so I have the best job. I love doing this, so we just have so many wonderful foster parents. Right now in Buncombe County, we have somewhere around 300 children in care, and we have around 90 foster families. So these foster families are just the backbone of our existence. We wouldn't be able to survive without them. And you're going to meet some of these folks today, and you're going to see some wonderful kids today, and I just want to give props to these children who've been sitting here for an hour, who have barely made a peep, who are doing excellent. Wow, so impressive. So, again, I just, it's, these families are so important, and one of the main ways that we get families is through word of mouth. So we really hope and really try to treat our foster families with respect, and want them to know how much we appreciate the work that they do. It's not a job for them, it's their life. This is something that they're living 24/7, and this is their life, and we just want to recognize them and let them know how much we appreciate them for their hard work. So we have four families today that we're going to recognize, and I'm going to start out with Joanna and Kirk Earls. Joanna, if y'all want to come up here? So Joanna and Kirk currently have three children right now with them, and I just want to say Joanna is a strong, strong foster parent. She is such a wonderful advocate for the children that are placed in her care. She's one of the first people that's going to call, she's going to advocate, she's going to find resources, and she's going to turn over every rock she can to get the best care for the children that she has placed with her. And we started a new foster parent group, and Joanna is leading that new foster parent group, so not only does she work full-time, she has placement of three children, and she's head of our foster parent group. And Joanna does excellent work, shared parenting with birth families, she maintains connections once children who've been placed in her home return to their birth families. These birth families still contact Joanna for respite, for advice, so the positive relationships that she establishes is just amazing, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service.
So the second family that I'd like to recognize would be Jeannie Waters. If y'all want to come up here, bring your boys up here. No? That's okay.
I'm sitting here, but I'm not coming up.
So I want to recognize Jeannie. She's been licensed with us for over 10 years, and she has had many children in her home. Jeannie does a wonderful job working with birth families and helping to reunify the children that are with her, to place them back with their families, and again, just a strong advocate for kids, and she's also an adoptive parent, so thank you, Jeannie. Okay, our third family would be Beth, Wes Morland. Would you like to bring up your daughter? You've done so good. Nice job. So Beth has been a foster parent with us for many years as well. She's adopted three children, and she currently has a foster child in her home as well. Beth also works full-time, has four children in her home, and is an incredible advocate for these children. Excellent at shared parenting and maintaining connections with siblings that have gone on to be placed elsewhere, and some of the siblings in her home, they still have that connection. She has a connection with the birth parents, just a very strong advocate, again, for her kids, and never hesitates to do anything that we ask her to do, so thanks, Beth. Okay, and lastly, we have Kathleen Chanishy, if you'd like to come up here. I think she brought her mom, too. Mom, you're welcome to come up as well. So Kathleen's been licensed with us for many years, and she's had a lot of children come in and out of her home, and Kathleen also does a great job with helping to teach birth families, works great, shared parenting, and they come to her for advice, and has really worked hard in helping to reunify the children that she's had in her home with their birth families, and I think now that Kathleen is working on an adoption, due to the connection that she had with the child that was previously in her home, that different folks have reached out to her, and she's going to be now working on an adoption, so we're very happy and pleased.
Thank you so much.
You was, again, a good mama.
She was.
Happy Mother's Day to you both.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we had no county manager's report, and I believe the next, we're going to move up the Blue Ridge Parkway report. We have Superintendent Mark Woods here from the Blue Ridge Parkway. Following Superintendent's presentation, we're going to consider a resolution. So Superintendent, it's good to have you here, thank you for your good work, and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you for having me with you all tonight. Chairman Gant, thank you, and members of the Commission, really appreciate being here and sharing a little with you about the Blue Ridge Parkway and some of the things that we have going on along the Parkway as well this year. I'd like to start today with the, with the Blue Ridge Parkway mission, what we focus on day in and day out as we manage the Parkway. One of the key focus areas for us, the mission of the Parkway, comes from the enabling legislation passed by Congress when the Parkway was established many, many decades ago. And I think the statement goes to the heart of our relationship with our adjacent communities. One of the, one of the special things about the Blue Ridge Parkway, obviously, are the world-class views and the many recreational opportunities that exist for folks who visit, literally, from all over the world. But a second element that I feel is equally as important are the communities up and down the 469 miles that the Parkway passes through, because they provide incredible opportunities for visitors and the public to slip off of the Parkway and enjoy the incredible character and flair that each community has to offer, much like Asheville and Waynesville and the many other communities up and down the Parkway. Another key element that you see in our mission statement is that the work that we do is focused on forever. We work to provide for the enjoyment of future generations now and into the future, so we're taking a long-term view of management of the Parkway. We take our responsibilities very serious as it relates to preservation of the natural and cultural resources, but I would add that we also take equally as seriously our relationship with our neighboring communities that we deal with from milepost zero all the way down to Cherokee at milepost 469. You can see that our communities, and we are located in 29 counties, the Parkway is located in 29 counties, but you can see that our communities like Buncombe County are an integral part of the Parkway. They're an attraction for visitors and part of what makes the Parkway unique as a unit of the National Park System, I would add, too. So what does this mean? Not only are there more obvious tourism and economic development partnerships with the many jurisdictions that we work with, there are also shared goals and land management. While the Parkway owns and manages all of the developed areas, like the picnic areas and the trail systems and the lakes and the variety of resources that we manage, many folks don't realize that much of what we don't own, those views outside of the Parkway property that we manage, are owned by, either by private, private landowners or by other government entities like state parks and U.S. Forest Service areas that we work with. The right-of-way of the National Park Service lands, in other words, is limited. In terms of view sheds and vistas, that means much of what In terms of view sheds and vistas, that means much of what visitors see is not under our management. The Parkway has over 4,000 adjoining landowners that we work with, ranging from the Biltmore Estate to individual landowners that share property along the border of the Blue Ridge Parkway. And the relationship becomes more apparent even when we look at how Parkway lands and views are managed. The view that you see, or the image that you see here, illustrates how public roads, private roads, and private and public lands create a network and an integrated, or integrally related landscape, if you will, that we manage day in and day out. We use measures like scenic easements, agricultural leases, to help manage the pastoral landscape that visitors come to love and treasure as they travel the Parkway. We refer to these landscapes often as the borrowed landscape. So it's important that we work together to protect the valuable Parkway views, and we really can't do that on our own. We have to work with our adjoining landowners, the communities in the 29 counties, the cities, the towns, and they all have a passionate interest in how the Parkway is managed. So why are these views important? We had a comprehensive study that was done in 2007, and we found that Parkway visitors, 97% of Parkway visitors during the fall of the year, and 96% during the summer period, told us that the scenic drive was really the most important aspect of their visit to the Blue Ridge Parkway. Buncombe County hosts 80 views throughout the Parkway corridor, and about 48 miles of Parkway that is located in Buncombe County. This calendar year alone, we have already seen an increase of 19.3%, an increase in visitor use in the Pisgah District alone. That's the area where Buncombe County is located, all the way down to Cherokee and up toward the Linville Falls area as well. And that's a significant increase, and we're seeing that increase at multiple districts along the Parkway. Translated into economic terms, in 2014, park visitors spent an estimated $863 million in local gateway regions while visiting the Blue Ridge Parkway, and those expenditures supported approximately 14,000 jobs. Visitors spent more money while visiting the Blue Ridge Parkway than any other unit of the National Park System. And for every dollar invested in national parks, there's a $10 return on that expenditure to the national economy. Here's an example of a difference a view can make to the visitor experience as they're traveling the Parkway. In the top picture, the vista is overgrown. The bottom picture has been cleared. Not only is there more visual appeal, but it lets visitors know that there's something beyond the Parkway that they may want to explore, that there's a broader landscape of interest and communities that they can discover. Finally, another example of impact of adjacent development on views, the picture on the top was taken in Virginia. The bottom is in the Asheville corridor. We know from the visitor surveys, as I referenced, and the many comment letters and phone calls that I receive weekly, that visitors value those unspoiled scenic views that make the Parkway famous. That's the number-one thing that I hear without a doubt from visitors, young and old alike, is that they value and treasure those incredible views that you see along the Blue Ridge Parkway. In 2016, the National Park Service will celebrate its 100th anniversary, August 25, 2016, and our focus is to connect with the next generation of visitors and ensure that the Parkway and the other units of the National Park System are found by those future generations in as good or better shape than they are today. An early director once stated, "Establishment of parks is not enough. What we need are more people who will take the time to stay informed about the important issues facing our national parks." So I want to thank you all tonight for allowing me to come and speak to you. I want to thank you for the support you provide to the Blue Ridge Parkway, and on behalf of the millions of visitors we receive annually, thank you for all you do in the community of Asheville and Buncombe County to provide that incredible experience as folks leave the Parkway and come into your backyard. So thank you very much.
Can we ask some questions?
Sure.
Let's see, Parkway started in 1935, is that right?
That's correct.
And finished Grandfather Mountain Loop, right?
The last segment would have been the Lynn Cove Viaduct around the Grandfather Mountain area, that's correct.
87, I believe?
About, I believe that's correct.
And is it true that the most visited, the biggest access point is Highway 25 in Buncombe County, where more people come on?
It is, it is an incredibly busy area. If you think of the interstate systems that come together here, just the draw of this area, this region, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Superintendent Woods? No charge for this, right? There's no toll for the Blue Ridge Parkway?
No, there is not. No charge at all.
And are there many parks like that where there's no charge to get in or to use it?
You know, each park is unique, depending on it's the legislation that created it. I can tell you from working in many national parks, from the Caribbean to historic sites, there's not another park area like the Blue Ridge Parkway. There are other Parkways, but this Parkway is unique and special in that you can see areas, like at the James River up in Virginia, that's about 600 feet above sea level, to some of the highest peaks in the eastern United States. So this park offers incredible opportunities for folks to do all sorts of things.
Okay, I think it's the second most visited national park in the country, is that right?
Yes, historically, it has been number one. Last year, we fell behind Golden Gate. Looking at the visitation figures I'm seeing now, I think we're going to bounce back to the top.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I remember as an inexperienced visitor to the Parkway, first time with two little kids, I looked at a map and went, you know, it's not really that far from Asheville to Mount Airy, you know? Drove that in like three hours or whatever. It was a beautiful drive.
Yes, it is.
But it was a long drive, a long scenic drive. I just, it was my first experience with the Parkway 30 years ago, coming here, but I've been all over. It's such a beautiful, beautiful place.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time.
Good to be with you.
I would like to propose a resolution, and let me read it into the record and then maybe talk about it a little bit. Whereas the Blue Ridge Parkway is a national treasure, started in 1935 during the Depression era, and finished in 1987 with Grandfather Mountain Viaduct Project. And whereas Blue Ridge Parkway boasts a total of 469 total miles and approximately 48 miles within Buncombe County, whereas the Blue Ridge Parkway Pisgah District runs through Buncombe County and has several major intersections with North Carolina roads in Buncombe County, whereas the Blue Ridge Parkway intersectioned Highway 25 in Buncombe County has the highest number of visitors of any intersection in the entire length of the Parkway through North Carolina and the state of Virginia last year, whereas Blue Ridge Parkway visitation has an overall economic impact on the surrounding area of $863 million last year, according to the most recent study by the Department of Interior. Whereas Blue Ridge Parkway has a very limited right-of-way, narrowing to as little as 400 feet in some sections of this road. Is that correct, 400 feet, that's the clearance you have? Whereas portions of the Blue Ridge Parkway in Virginia have seen some adjacent development that has severely degraded the quality of the scenic views and irreversibly impacted visitor experience in Blue Ridge Parkway cultural and natural resources negatively. Whereas Blue Ridge Parkway is worthy of special protection and considerations in all planning and development within Buncombe County region. Whereas protection and preservation of the Blue Ridge Parkway is considered in a Buncombe County overlay that currently exists in our zoning plan, whereas this board requests the Buncombe County Planning Board and planning staff to review and make recommendations to this board concerning the adequacy of the current zoning overlay and the need for other ordinances or considerations after consulting with the Blue Ridge Parkway staff on the best way to protect and preserve the Blue Ridge Parkway as it runs through Buncombe County for future generations. Be it resolved by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, number one, that the Buncombe County Planning Board and planning staff be, and they are hereby instructed, to consult with the Blue Ridge Parkway staff and review the protection and preservation adequacy of the current Blue Ridge Parkway overlay. Number two, that the Buncombe County Planning Board and planning staff shall make recommendations to this board based on the findings of the review of the overlay and any other suggested ordinances, law, or advisory boards at the earliest possible time. I have a short PowerPoint, if we could put that up, and then I'm going to ask for public comment, and let's discuss this a little further. This is, all these pictures are from Blue Ridge Parkway, but that's first. Next, as Superintendent Woods said, it is the second most visited park. Last year, it had 14 million visitors. We have 48 miles, and the economic impact, jobs, those are direct, that's direct income. I think there is a multiplier. I think you can get it above $1 billion with multipliers. I did not do that. And the busiest intersection happens to be Highway 25. Next. So the resolution we have basically has two parts to it. First is to direct a meeting, a discussion about what we have currently. I might ask Mr. Creighton just to briefly talk about what we have currently. And then the second part of it is have the planning board and staff make recommendations back to us. I will recommend that both the, there'd be public hearings, both in planning board and our board, to make sure everyone is aware of what we're proposing, and everyone has a chance to discuss the move we may choose to make, depending on what the recommendations are. John, what do we have now as far as overlays? What does that mean, and what is that?
Currently, we do have a Blue Ridge Parkway overlay. I may need, I'm sorry, we currently do have an overlay. Most of, I'd say probably half of the Blue Ridge Parkway gets in the steep slope, high elevation overlay. That's the part that's basically up north of the city of Asheville. In those particular areas, it defines the average house height. It does impervious surfaces. It requires screening on the front side, and it also, like I say, does do height. When you get on down towards the flatter part, outside the city limits, basically south, we do a quarter mile width. And in those areas, the average height can be, or the height of the residence can be 40 feet. It requires screening if it can be seen from the Parkway. It does require screening if it can be seen from the Parkway. Trying to think anything else that it does dictate, but it doesn't do anything about impervious surface and those kind of things.
Okay. Superintendent, can I get you back up?
And it only affects properties that border the Parkway.
Okay, okay. So we do have national forest on either side, and we, I think it does run through the city of Asheville, and of course, their laws would supersede ours. But is it correct that we have national forest on both north and south ends?
Correct.
That go through Buncombe County?
Yes.
And so we wouldn't have any say about the national forest or the city areas?
No.
It's just the outside?
Correct.
In my, in the resolution, there's a discussion about Virginia. I think you showed a picture of that.
I did.
How does that affect the Parkway?
The development?
When the development is right next to it?
The development in Virginia, there are areas that subdivisions have been built, literally right up, right up on the boundary of the Parkway, and actually, the county officials in Virginia, in Roanoke County, following some of the development that occurred, have worked with the Parkway now to provide us with a period to comment when they have proposals for development. And we typically receive those and provide any comments that we might have. Those comments aren't binding by any means, but it simply is an opportunity for us to, for the county to seek input from the Parkway on design elements or those kind of things related to development that you might not initially think of when you are, you know, proposing development along the Parkway.
And there's no right of eminent domain of taking anybody's property?
Oh, no.
You're talking about working the best way?
Yes.
And you're not, you're not taking away people's right to develop, it's just you want to work with them?
That's right.
And develop it in a smart way that...
And we were actually approached by them to begin that process, following some of the development that occurred in that area.
Okay, okay. So questions?
The Parkway in the Roanoke area is quite a bit different than the Parkway here.
Correct.
I mean, as far as the way the trees close in on us here, and, you know, the vegetation and different things, when you get up there, it kind of opens up, the views open up. And, you know, we have a, so as we, as this is looked at, I would assume that all of that be taken, because you can't paint, you know, this area with the same brush that you paint in Roanoke. It's, I mean, it's totally different. Though the problems could be similar, they might occur in a different way. And I think that's actually good news for us, because when you get up there, it just opens up, and so there could be, you know, a lot more problems up there than here, and different ones, I guess.
You've got a pastoral, much more pastoral setting there with the open fields and the like.
All right, any other questions about, before we, I think, I'm going to move that we adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
And a motion and second on that. Any other questions, and then I think we'll go to public comment. See if anybody has a public comment, and then we'll discuss the matter further. Any other questions for Superintendent Woods? Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, talking about 25, which is Hendersonville Road, and the crossover there, that's the biggest place to get off. But if you come past 25 and come on toward Bent Creek, you do see Biltmore Forest on the right-hand side through the trees. And now you see the rambles on the left-hand side through the trees. So it's not totally bad, but, you know, it's, and if you do climb, work 2,100 feet, if you climb to 3,000 feet and you have this elevation looking down, you have to give the people a right to do something that's farther away. So, you know, I'm for what you're doing, to look at it, but we need to look and not overdo it, that's...
And I think that, just while Commissioner Farr said, the ramble area and right around there, that is kind of a model of what you would like to work with adjacent property
It really, really is. That's a good example.
They did a wonderful job.
Sure is. Color, you know, color schemes and those kind of things can make a huge difference.
But just the way they did the ramble entrance and everything, the buffers, is really tremendous and there to be commended.
I agree.
I've heard many talks from the Blue Ridge Parkway folks that they cite that as an example of how they would like to work with adjacent property owners. All right.
I'll mention one thing, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We have produced a neighbor's guide to the Blue Ridge Parkway that, you know, communities come to us and often ask, what can we do? And so this is a helpful tool that is available for folks. I'm sure you all have seen that.
We'd love to have, leave a copy here, too.
Okay, we'll do.
For everybody, could we get a copy?
Yeah, could we get a copy for all of them?
I can. I don't have that many with me, but I'll be sure you get them.
All right, so thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Do they have these at the center, they have up on the Parkway?
We don't. We've got them at our headquarters, but they aren't, we don't just distribute them at all our visitor centers, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have a motion and second to pass a resolution that basically has the two parts to consult and then come back with recommendation after public hearing at the planning board level and at the commissioner level. Is there any public comment? Okay, several. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing up at 5:45, and we'll start Mr. Stevens, and then you two in the back. You four, you'll be the next four speakers. We'll start Mr. Stevens. Y'all just come on up. Ma'am, you can come up, too. Yeah, thank you.
I'm Professor Hugh Stevens. I'm the past chair of the Friends of the Blue Ridge Parkway. We have a chapter here in Asheville, and the main thing we do is support the Parkway staff and carry out tasks on the Parkway, which they simply don't have enough people to deal with. I think here of roadside litter pickup, by the way, we have the most challenging situation there, because we have the commuter corridor that goes from the north at US 70, past 74A, and then to 25, and then to 191. And one of our major tasks now that takes some of our time is to pick up all that litter and keep it clean. Our theory is if we keep it clean, people will treat it that way. And so we work on that. We've also refurbished the entire Pisgah campground of 120 campsites, a little out of your jurisdiction, but we have done that. And we're working on historic buildings and clearing overlooks and this kind of thing, just work which the, there's not enough Parkway staff to do. I want, want to point out that this is a unique national park just about. I mean, maybe some underwater thing in the Caribbean or something is unique, too. But I'm, I'm thinking here, we've got a Parkway that probably is 100 yards, 200 yards wide in some places, and that anything beyond that, as the superintendent pointed out, is out of their control. And I'm up here not only to tell you that there is a volunteer group here working, supplementing the efforts of the Parkway staff on this, call Friends of the Parkway, but we are most concerned with the scenic beauty as well, and do what we can to sustain it. My late father, who published some books on the Parkway, I think was the one who said, "This is the best thing the federal government ever did, except to win World War II." We are concerned about sustaining the Parkway. If, if we have too much development too close, we ruin the scenic beauty, and by the way, it is gone forever. I think the situation in Virginia is particularly tragic, because a lot of that is gone forever.
Okay.
And I support this resolution.
Thank you, Hugh. Yes, ma'am. And Joel, you'll be next.
Good afternoon. My name's Martha Bogel, and I live here in Asheville, North Carolina. I recently retired from the National Park Service as superintendent of Shenandoah National Park. I had a 30-year career, had the honor of working on the Blue Ridge Parkway twice in my career and living here in Asheville, and I'm glad to be back. During my 30-plus-year career, I learned very quickly the importance of local communities and counties to national parks, and the importance of national parks to local communities and counties. The Parkway is unique in that it runs through 29 counties, both in North Carolina and Virginia. And the scenic beauty of the Blue Ridge Parkway is the number-one attraction to the Parkway. Visitor research reveals time and time again that people come because of the mountains and the scenic views. Most of the Parkway overlooks, or many of the Parkway overlooks, no longer afford those scenic views and valley views because of trees growing up or incompatible development. Decades of reduced National Park Service budgets have resulted in overlooks and vistas that today are green walls or green tunnels with stands of mature trees. In other areas, especially in Virginia, unrestricted development, incompatible development adjacent to the narrow Parkway has marred the scenery. In the anniversary year of 2010, when the Parkway celebrated its 75th anniversary, visitation increased in every county along the Parkway with the exception of one. You can probably guess where that was. It's Roanoke County. And Roanoke County recognized that they needed to do something, and now we're working very closely with the Parkway in helping to take a look at compatible development. The Blue Ridge Parkway is a key attraction for many communities and towns along the corridor, just like Shenandoah and the Skyline Drive. Four years ago, the Haywood County, North Carolina, identified threats to the Parkway and began annual funding to hire the National Park Service and its contractors to clear Parkway overlooks and key vistas within Haywood County. Today, the work in their county is almost complete. The good news is that this is not an ongoing maintenance item. Once the trees are removed and the vistas are cleared, you don't have to do it for 50, 60, 70 more years. The Friends of the Blue Ridge Parkway has identified clearing the overlooks as a number-one goal for 2016, the 100th, the 100th anniversary of the park. We certainly support this resolution.
Thank you, Superintendent Bogel.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Shenandoah is a beautiful park. Never seen more deer in one place. Never seen more deer. Yeah, bears, I'm sure.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Joel Mazzellis. I live near the Ox Creek entrance to the Parkway. And to our last speaker, I lived an hour and a half for many years from Shenandoah National Park, and spent a lot of time in that park. I also formerly owned land, a stone's throw from the Parkway down in Haywood County. Well, I enjoy living up there, and I think this resolution is just good common sense for planning and development, okay? You can't do planning and development in a vacuum. You have to have all the pieces there and all the stakeholders. And we saw how well that worked out with the Forest Service and the big IV community, okay? This is the only way to do it. Now, at one point, my wife and I had been visiting family here for over 30 years. One time, we jumped on Skyline Drive and said, "Let's just head south," because we want to see the entire Parkway, okay? Place in Virginia, North Carolina. But let me talk real quickly about dollars and cents. Most people understand that nowadays. We know what the economic impact is for the county, and it's a good one. And we must do everything to preserve that and maybe increase it. Now, I'm not sure who opposes this resolution, and I have a hard time figuring out why. And the thing is, too, the economic impacts, it just doesn't affect, let's say, for-profit corporations. It affects the guy owns the convenience store, the artists, the dining spots that buy their food from some of the small local farms. I've been in an area where they didn't do any planning and coordination, and it's not a pretty sight. So I think we need to preserve this, and that's why I'm very much highly in favor of the resolution. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Joel. Mr. Bray?
Thank you for allowing us to provide public comment. I think there's no question that.
Name and brief from, I mean, we know who you are, but just your name.
I'm sorry, Ken Braim, Lester Community. But looking at the Blue Ridge Parkway, it truly is a treasure for many of the residents in Buncombe County. Many of us love hiking along the trails near the Parkway, driving and seeing the beautiful views. But in addition to that, there's a huge economic impact. You heard the report from, from the superintendent talking about the economic benefit, and certainly tourism, there's a huge direct impact for that. But I would, would make the point that it's a golden goose in many ways, other than just for tourism. Many people that move here, retire here, first are introduced to this area because of coming to see the Parkway and the beautiful views, and that gives them a wonderful impression and does things like what it did to me. When I saw it, I said, "You know, someday I'm going to live there." And eventually I did, figured out a way to move here, to be here. And what that happens is, is that people retire here, people bring their businesses here, or start up a business here like I did. Also, when many of the businesses that, the manufacturing plants or other companies that choose to move a business here or start a business here, they do it because, not because we have the cheapest land, the biggest tax breaks, it's because we have a wonderful quality of life and the beauty of the area. Because I think we have to be very careful that we don't do what happened in Roanoke and kill that golden goose. So I would encourage you to definitely support this effort to figure out what's the best way to protect the views of the Parkway and what makes sense to all the residents of this county and protect this golden goose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Yes, any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Okay. You three, just come on up in the front row here, if y'all want to sit.
Hi there. I'm Judy Maddox, and I'm chair of our local Sierra Club, and thank you very much for considering this resolution. I represent over 6,000 of our members and supporters here in western North Carolina. And guess what? We love the Blue Ridge Parkway. We love the mountain-to-sea trails. We love this area, and that's why we're here. But I want to share with you that I hiked outside of Buncombe County up Mount Pisgah, and I was absolutely amazed to look down and see a mountain clear-cut and developed. I mean, it wasn't developed into condos, but it was clear-cut. And you know what? I never went back. And I think that's what we're hearing, is that people come here over and over and over again, and they spend their money here, and they love it here. So yes, protect us and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Yes, sir.
My name is J.D. Diefenbach. I live in Buncombe County with my wife, Chan, who is a native of Buncombe County. I recently retired after 24 years of federal land management, 14 years with MPS, and 10 years with the US Forest Service. I commend you all in support of revolution promoting the preservation and protection of the scenic beauty of the Blue Ridge Parkway. Public input and public meetings are very important to any proposed planning board. This is the first step, because planners need specific information from local public. At the local level, much of the demographic information can be derived from public sources such as the US Census data. However, there are few reference sources available that describe people's attitudes, beliefs, and lifestyles at the local level. I strongly recommend your planning board to incorporate a science-based assessment into their recommendations, as this will become the foundation of a successful partnership with adjacent landowners. Convene your partners and your stakeholders to identify the priority lands. Your stakeholders may include property owners, regulators, consultants, lenders, city-county planners, economic development agencies, politicians, developers, real estate agents, academia, students, lawyers, and of course, the communities. This is a great opportunity for all of Buncombe County to find a way to preserve and protect the beautiful scenic views from the Blue Ridge Parkway. After it all, it is America's drive. Over the years, National Park Service has became much more urbanized than the Forest Service has. We love our public lands to death. Throughout many years, I have the privilege of protecting some magnificent parks and forests. I literally watched years and year after encroachment after encroachment to what is now being called the urban interface. Federal lands are affected by everything that goes on around their boundaries. The increased visitation, urban sprawl, lack of enforcement, the lack of funding, are slowly and sadly turning some of our treasures into cesspools. With that, I would also speak and say that I'm also in favor of requesting the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency to revise their proposed Title V permit of the Asheville coal plant to specific numeric emission limits of .029 pounds per 1 million BTUs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir, Jay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gail Solomon Canty. I live in Weaverville, and I can tell you how delighted I am to come to a public meeting such as this to say, "Hoorah! Thank you for the resolution." I couldn't be more delighted. So often you come here and you're kind of saying, "No, no, don't do that." And I'm saying, "Yes, do that, please." When I grew up, there was a song by Joni Mitchell, "Pave paradise and put up a parking lot." And once you pave that paradise, it's gone. You can't unpave it. So I commend what you're doing, and I salute you for it. I do have one question, however. It was unclear to me from the resolution, who has ultimate jurisdiction? The planning board will be answering to this commission, and will it be this committee that will have the jurisdiction?
The commission will essentially have the jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Canty. Any other public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Yelton.
They got these people on the front row.
And I'm sorry, you, you go ahead, and Mr. Ms. Yelton be after you two. Ms. Stiles and.
This whole crowd right here.
My name is Bruce Clark, and I live out toward Fairview. And I moved here for the mountains and the Parkway, and I live two miles from the Parkway right now. The Parkway, in my opinion, is the greatest accomplishment of mankind in the southeastern U.S. It's sad that it's so easy to see the backyards of track homes and other developments along the Parkway. One stretch show of the Parkway that comes to mind like that is between US 70 and State Road 191. Tourists will not come, will not be coming back to see that in Buncombe County. They can go north to Wilkes and Allegheny County, or they can go south toward Cherokee to see the unspoiled views. Tourists come to the Parkway for views, foliage, and wildlife, not someone's large house or any other form of development. People are looking to get away from all that. For disabled or elderly folks, a drive on the Parkway is their only nature experience. So please keep it special and uncluttered for them. I support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Ms. Stiles?
My name is DeeDee Stiles, and I live in Swananoa. Fortunately for me and my family, we can see the Parkway from our house. You could see our house from the Parkway, too, if you have your binoculars, because we're quite a distance away. And even if you did, you wouldn't see our house clearly, because there's a 100-year-old hemlock tree standing in front of it, screening it from views all around. One of the things that I think, and the man from the Park Service alluded to this, if you drive on the Parkway, some of the time you see buildings that are close to the Parkway. And this resolution is only concerned with those buildings that are within a quarter of a mile of the Parkway. But if you visit the Parkway, you will see right away that most of the buildings you see are not that close to the Parkway, like my house, for instance. You can see it from the Parkway, but it's not that close. And some houses are a lot closer and more noticeable. And one of the places to look for that is if you go past the Folk Arts Center, up to the first overlook, and you, that overlooks Haw Creek Valley. If you look out at the mountainside, you will notice that some houses clearly stand out, and some houses, you have to look a little harder to see them, because the surface of those houses are painted specific colors with a specific amounts of reflectivity. And I would like to say that that's much more important when you're trying to preserve the views on the Parkway, is not so much having people plant trees and screen with trees, unless you're, people are going to go back and make sure those trees are maintained and they're not sawed down later or whatever. But if you have a certain specific color palette or reflectivity palette that is required, not only on the buildings adjacent to the Parkway, but I would also like to see that extended to all the high-elevation zoning regulations and steep-slope regulations, because those are the houses, and those are the places where the Parkway visitors are more likely to look. You can see the Asheville Mall from the Parkway, and I don't think the visitors to the Parkway are too disturbed about that. They expect there to be development in the valleys. But when we're developing on the steep slopes and the high elevations and close to the Parkway, I think you need to really consider the, the reflectivity and the colors so that the structures match the environment much more closely. the structures match the environment much more closely. And I would like to see this resolution and the commissioners encourage the planning board to consider that type of restriction and limitation in the zones that are visible from the Parkway and adjacent to the Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you for hearing my comment. My name is Lisa McQuarter. I live in East Asheville, close to the Folk Arts Center, and I lead hikes for Sierra Club, often in Buncombe County on the Mountains to Sea Trail, which is right alongside the Parkway. And I applaud you for this resolution, for putting forth this resolution. And I know it's got a lot to still develop on it. And just wanted to mention that how important I think this area of the Parkway is for the, you know, the well-being of the, like economically in the county. I'm sure that when the Parkway is closed down from rock slides and such, I notice the travel is way down, and I'm sure that the funds from tourism is way down during these times. And just to reiterate, yes, the views are very important, and to hikers as well as those that stop at the overlook. And it's very, it's noticeable from the trail when there's a house close by. And so I just urge you to do all you can to protect that area, not only from the view, but also from the impact of having neighborhoods very close to the Parkway and the environmental impact that that has on it. Also, just to reiterate that I've been to the Virginia area, and it was so lacking, so aesthetically bad compared with the North Carolina stretch of the Parkway. So I just hope we preserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McQuarter. Mr. Yelton?
I'm going to be the odd man out, always am. Dave, you remember you first came here, you and I met one time, we went out and looked at the mountain over Fairview. What'd I tell you? Remember I said they're going to be building all over these mountains? We need to do something. But what you've got to realize is that every time you do something, you're taking somebody else's property rights. Do not forget that. And I'm not saying I'm against this, but what I'm saying is that I would like to be involved in the planning process, because I'm going to tell you what, the lady has got some great ideas about the color and so forth, but you know how you do that? You reduce the taxes you charge the person if they follow your guidelines. And if they have a farm there, and they want to keep it a little country farm, which we're trying to do countywide, right? Then we give them a great big tax break if they keep it looking good for the view. You do it with a reward rather than a taking of property rights. Now, God forbid we touch the rambles, but you know, a piece of property next to the Parkway is of very high value, isn't it? So if somebody chooses to build a $3 million house there, guess what? Create an overlay that charges them more taxes. Because I can remember, I was born and raised here. I'm a rare breed, I'm a local. I didn't come here for the Parkway. Yes, people come here for the Parkway, and we could kill the goose that laid the golden egg, but each of those golden eggs is a person moving here, as you heard all these people talk. And when they move here, they've got to live somewhere. Where are they going to live, folks? We've got to have a place for them to live, right? So maybe we let them build a $3 million house up there, and we create an overlay and charge them a little extra for that, because he can afford it. But there's one thing that I want you to take very seriously, David, listen to this. Distribution of sales tax by population. You have a very good reason here to defend keeping the sales tax here, because you, as a county, are going to reduce property taxes if they do what they should to keep the Parkway active. And I think you understand that that's a logic that is going to take a good, smart brain to see it. I hope you've got enough smart brains in Raleigh to see that, okay? And that's not a political statement, because I'm not for redistribution of wealth, but I think there's a way to do that and turn that into a positive. I can remember traveling the Parkway, and thank God, the guy said it. The Parkway was started because it was clear cut, and the timber companies were through with it. You've got to know your history, folks. And I used to drive the Parkway, and guess what? I had a view from Asheville to Roanoke. I could see out everywhere. And now we're having to cut it, and we don't have the money. Perhaps if we cut some timber along the Parkway and sold it, we might have enough money to clean off the driveouts.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton.
Any other public comment on the Blue Ridge Parkway resolution?
Yes, sir, you can do that. Any other comments? Yes, sir, in the back.
My name's Robert Zeber. I live in South Asheville, and I probably accounted for quite a few of those trips at the Route 25 intersection on the Parkway there, when I cut across there to different places. So I appreciate the Parkway being there. It saves me a lot of time sometimes, and it's a great view. I'd like to thank the board for initiating this process, and I wish the staff good luck in going forward with this. I remember when I was a kid, I used to like picture books. I'm hoping there'll be lots of before and after pictures in this work that we're going to be working on, that would show what the Parkway would look like without proper building concerns, and without some kinds of thought to what the view shed would look like if development gets too close to the Parkway, or as we've heard about in Virginia. I haven't personally seen those areas in Virginia, but I can imagine. So I wish good luck to the staff, and thanks again for starting this process.
Thank you, Mr. Deever. Any other public comment? If not, I'll declare the public hearing of the Blue Ridge Parkway Resolution closed at 6:12. There's been a motion by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Frost. Is there any discussion or further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I really want to thank you. Before I actually knew you, in 2000, I knew that you were an advocate for the Blue Ridge Parkway. And just as we started saying the Blue Ridge Parkway is focused on the future, we need to be too. And I thank you for your leadership and your pursuit of this.
Any other comments?
I would like to say that I'm happy to support this study. To clarify, it is a study, and we're going to listen to the recommendations going forward. But I think this is an approach that is good for the board to take, where we study items, listen to the experts, and then make our decision. So I'm very proud about this process and this approach, and I thank you for that. I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBulle. Yes, sir, Mr. Bell.
I've got a couple of comments, and possibly a minor change, and may not need to make I will echo Commissioner DeBulle's comments, and also say that as we move forward, which I'm sure we will, that we use caution in maintaining the character, not only the view, but the character of the Parkway. I like old barns, and if they're about, even if they're halfway fallen down, I like that too. You know, so, you know, to some people, that might not be attractive. To me, it's very attractive, and has a lot of character, and maintains a lot of history. So I think as we look at this, you know, we instruct the planning board and staff to use caution, have a lot of input, you know, which I'm sure that we will. And then, again, it'll be coming back to us, so we'll have an opportunity to, you know, agree or disagree, or be able to maybe even make changes at that time. In number two, as I read that on the resolution, where it says that the Buncombe County Planning Board and Planning Staff shall make recommendations to this board based on findings of the review of the BRP, Blue Ridge Parkway Overlay, and then it says, "and/or other suggested ordinances, laws, or advisory boards at the earliest possible of time." I would suggest that after the word "boards," we either put "related to this resolution" or "related to the BRP," because the intent of this is for ordinances and resolutions related to this. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'll be glad to take that as a friendly amendment. Is there any, is that Commissioner Frost?
I'm actually would be voting against it, that amendment, because I do feel like when you have a group that is studying something, and something else comes forward that may be from other information, that we are empowering the planning board to bring that information forward. I don't feel like we need to hamstring them. I don't expect that there's going to be some other additional things. I'm just saying, in the course of reviewing a lot of information, that we need to let that body do its work. So I'll be voting against the amendment.
I will retract my, I think that's, I agree with that. So if we want to do an amendment, we'll take it as an unfriendly amendment, and we'll take it separately. Is that an amendment, a motion to amend?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that amendment, just since I brought it up, that we add to paragraph number two, "boards" that we add related to the BRP.
Okay. So the amendment is, on number two, would read that the Buncombe County Planning Board and Planning Staff make recommendations to this board based on findings and review of the Blue Ridge Parkway Overlay and/or other suggested ordinances, laws, or advisory boards related to the Blue Ridge Parkway, instead of, just delete "at the earliest time..."
No, leave that.
Oh, leave that, okay.
Just insert.
Oh, just add that, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Does everybody understand? Okay, there's been an amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner DeBulle seconds. Any discussion about the amendment? All right, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The motion fails. Commissioner Belcher, DeBulle, and Friar in favor, remaining board against. Okay, so any other amendments or discussion of the proposed resolution?
Chairman, I had just one other comment.
Sir.
Which would be that as the planning board looks at this, and it's probably not any bright idea they wouldn't have already, but just, you know, I think that there's, I would just really encourage an approach that, you know, there may be some different places where different rules, as they relate to zoning and development regulations and things like that, you know, might make sense to look at updating. But there might be other things that we can do as well, that are more incentive-based or educationally oriented. I don't think we can actually do the kind of different property tax ideas specifically. I think there's some, I don't think it's constitutional, but there might be other things that we can do to financially incentivize certain things. So certain things might, you know, maybe, you know, certain things are regulatory in nature, other things might be incentivized but not required, but just sort of a menu of things to help encourage the kind of compatible development, future that I think we all want to see. So just a combination of different tools. Some of them might be rules, some of them might be incentives.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? If not, I'll call the question on the Blue Ridge Parkway preservation and protection as originally proposed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the motion carries seven to zero, and we will be looking forward to hearing back from the planning staff and planning board. And Superintendent, thank you for being here. We look forward to working with your folks. Property owners, we look forward to working with them on what will work and not work, and discussions with the whole community. Thank you. Next up, if anyone wants to leave that came here for that, feel free to leave right now. We've got a lot more to go here.
Get out while they're getting good.
But feel free if you need to leave. Next up, we're going to talk about the resolution to authorize Chairman to sign a letter to the WNC Regional Air Quality Board. I think Commissioner Newman's going to talk about that.
Thank you, Chairman Gant. The item before us now is related to, there's a public comment period that's open for the permit renewal on the power plant here in Buncombe County. It's a really important facility. It generates the vast majority of the electricity that lights up all of our buildings and homes. So it's a really important facility, but it's also one of the largest sources of air emissions in the region. It's a facility that's been a real success story in terms of improving air quality in western North Carolina over the last decade. It was the first facility in the state that was retrofitted with scrubbers to reduce air pollution as a result of the North Carolina Clean Smoke Tax Act. And as a result, this facility is dramatically cleaner than it was a decade ago. So it's been a real success story. The permit, the air permit for sulfur dioxide is up for renewal, and there's public comment period open. And so this is simply a proposal that the county commissioners submit some comments to that. And would you like me to read the letter, Chairman?
Yes.
So I'll read that in just a moment. But the short version of this, in summary, is that the county is encouraging the Western North Carolina Air Agency to adopt a standard that will allow the facility to be compliant with a new EPA air quality standard. And so that's what we're asking them, we're encouraging them to do. They'll be making a decision on the permit renewal in the near future. So I'll just read the letter now. Chairman Britt Levin, the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Board, Chairman Levin, "Dear Chairman Levin, on behalf of the Buncombe County Commissioners, I'm writing to express concern about the draft Title V air permit recently issued by the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency for the Duke Energies Asheville Steam Electric Plant. Specifically, we're concerned that the suggested permit limit for sulfur dioxide is insufficient to protect county residents from harmful air pollution, and we ask that you strengthen that limit to ensure our residents can breathe healthy air. As you know, even short-term exposure to SO2 is linked to an array of adverse respiratory effects, including bronchocytial restrictions and increased asthma symptoms. Elevated concentrations of SO2 in the air leads to more emergency room visits and hospital admissions, particularly for children, the elderly, and people with asthma. According to a recent report that uses a model approved by the Environmental Protection Agency for tracking SO2 pollution, emissions from the Asheville plant have been causing violations of the ambient air quality standard for SO2 established by the EPA. Indeed, the report states that the pollution in residential and recreational areas is at concentrations up to 3.5 times higher than levels EPA has determined to be safe. The exceedances have occurred approximately one out of every three to four days since 2010. We are concerned that the newly released draft air permit maintains the same SO2 emissions limit that the plant has had for years. That limit is nearly 80 times higher than the limit necessary to attain EPA's public health-based SO2 standard, and we believe it is insufficient to protect our community from the impact of air pollution. The final Title V permit should contain limits that allow ambient air in the Asheville area to meet EPA standard. We understand that the limit to be no more than 61.7 pounds per hour of SO2 for each coal burning unit or plant-wide average of .29 pounds per million BTUs. We also understand that these levels are achievable if the plant's air pollution controls are run at full efficiency, as they were when they were first installed, or if the plant stops using high sulfur content coal. Part of our job as elected officials is to ensure the safety of our community. There seems to be a clear path to addressing this problem and ensuring healthy air for our residents. And the first step on that path is for the plant's air permit to contain the appropriate SO2 limit. Sincerely, David Gant, Chairman." And I'll just make a couple of other comments, and then I'll make a motion that we support, support to the chairman to sign this letter. You know, this is a very, this is a very technical permit. It's a, you know, there's a lot of legal issues involved, a lot of engineering issues involved around how these air emissions are looked at from a modeling standpoint and a monitoring standpoint. And I know that, I've been talking to folks from the Western North Carolina Air Agency this week, and other folks who have a lot more technical expertise in this than I do. I understand there's also a lot of issues around how the EPA rules come down to the states and the local air agency. But I'm supportive of this because I believe that the EPA standard is a very solid, scientifically based health standard that we want to see achieved in our community. And in short, I think what we're doing by passing this letter is encouraging compliance with that and adoption of those standards on the most expeditious timeframe we can. So for those reasons, I'll make a motion that we support this letter, signed by Chairman Gant, if supported.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Newman, seconded by Commissioner Jones. We will have a public hearing on this.
But I'd like to comment before.
Okay, yes, sir. Commissioner?
I've heard this, let's see, I think this is the second time I've heard this same letter read. Cecil Bothell read it at the meeting the other night. So I've got one question as far as this letter to our attorney. It's the same letter with a change. Is this plagiarism? With somebody not signing off on a letter, is this letter being used? Is this plagiarism, using the same words on something?
And I guess I have, kind of just while you're thinking about that, but my understanding that plagiarism isn't a crime. I mean, I think... I mean, I think plagiarism is, so I don't really think that's a pertinent question. But anyway, I'll let their attorney respond.
Yes, sir.
Well, it might be plagiarism if you just copy it, but I don't think there's any, you know, that there's any legal prohibition against copying another person's, you know, letter. I, you know, I often copy other agreements that have been written by other attorneys, and I tailor them for my individual situation. So I'm sure that if you're concerned about the particular language in this letter, you could probably tweak the language in the letter if you wanted, you know, to make it our own. But I don't think there's any legal prohibition against copying, copying this letter.
Well, I saw a professor at a college, because he plagiarized, be dismissed after 10 years. So he was using other people's stuff without them signing off on it. So this is basically, it might not be that bad, but the word is plagiarism. The second thing that I'd like to bring forward is, I've watched the tape from the air quality meeting. I have cancer. I am two years in today, finding that I did have cancer. So I'm celebrating two years of life. I lived in a coal mine camp in an area called Harlan County, Kentucky. There's a nice picture of it up now on the web that you can find of what happened to that area. The second thing is, did coal cause my cancer? Did my smoking cause my cancer? Did trichothylene, T O C, cause it? Because when I worked building engines, I worked in that with my hands. I built race cars, the fumes from the welders, the argon, all of that. Did that cause my cancer? What caused my cancer? We don't know. All I know is I have it. I've carried it for two years. I had a tumor, is unoperable, and I'm lucky to be here. But all this is, is a mapping, mapping of the, what they think is. There was a mapping not long ago in Washington, in New York, that there was going to be this big storm, big storm. They closed the schools, the subways, the buses, everything. It didn't snow. So, you know, when you put numbers out, you need to have instruments to prove what the numbers are. I have a little project. Anybody that'd like to come up, tell me how big this item is. Just look at it and tell me what you think. Or how long and round that item is. Or how long and thick this item is. What it takes to figure out what they are are called instruments. Here's the instrument that reads the size of this. This reads four inches and 23 thousandths. No, four inches, yeah, four inches, 23 thousandths. That's a 30-over piston for an engine. Anybody know how long that is? Would you take a guess? Anybody up here take a guess?
Seven inches.
Well, I'm just looking for a guess, because all this paperwork we're looking at is just a guess. This instrument reads this at six inches and 75 thousandths. This instrument reads this at 300 and 10 thousandths thick. But then you have a new instrument here to read this. Anybody know what the outside measurement with this would be? Because all you're doing out here in this paperwork, and our staff's getting ready to send a letter off, that nobody has a clue if that's the truth. Nobody. Nobody in this audience, nobody else has a clue. So anybody give me an idea of how long this pin is and how round it is? I'd be more than welcome for you to come up here and look at it and give me an idea. No? Not going to happen, huh? Well, using an instrument, it tells me this wrist pin is 927 thousandths around. This instrument tells me this wrist pin is two inches, 300 thousandths long. And I can even use this at the inside to tell you how thick the walls are. One inch, 750 thousandths. Anybody that can bring an instrument up here and show me that the numbers in this paperwork are right, I'll be more than happy to listen to. Other than that, I have no reason to listen to it, or I have no reason to support this letter.
All right. Any other comments before we go to public hearing?
I would like to say that I remember very clearly many of us gathered at the Arboretum when our local delegation passed the Clean Smoke Tax Bill, a bill that people said could never happen. And I think, based on that leadership and our history, that this is, all we can do is try and do the best thing we can for our citizens.
One more comment.
Yes, sir.
We have two gentlemen here that can probably, you know, there's probably other questions to be asked here. But, you know, going places and listening to things that people think is a different story than what I just did. If you don't measure what you're doing yourself, you should not be speaking for it or against it. But, you know, I'm sure there's questions that can be asked of these two gentlemen from this staff and the people that want to speak. Just bring me something, show me that you, you understand, that you have an instrument that you can tell me that you can use. That's all I care about. You bring it, I'll listen to it. But other than that, I have no reason to. And I am not supporting any club, I don't care if it's Sierra, Tea Party, Mountain True, whoever. I'm supporting the people, I'm supporting the people of Buncombe County, not 6,000, 250,000. And that's, that's what I'm looking at. So if you have the information to show me, bring it to me.
Okay. We're going to have public comment in just a minute. Any other comments to the commission? I would like to thank Kevin Lance and James Radford for being here from the air pollution, air quality staff. Thank you for being here, gentlemen. I will open the public hearing at 6:34. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this resolution? Yes, sir. We'll have you first, you're next, and then we'll go zigzag here. Now, I'll come, I'll tell, everybody that wants to speak, just come up and sit on the front row. We'll do it that way this time.
Thank you very much for holding this public comment. My name is Rich Wash. I live in north Asheville and can actually see the power plant from our house. There are really four issues. First off, I think your resolution is excellent, and I support it wholeheartedly. There are four key issues. Is there a health-based evidence from the EPA regarding an unsafe level of SO2? The answer to that is yes. The EPA has set an unsafe level. So we, we know what that level is. The second question is, is there evidence that Duke Energy's coal plant emits unsafe level of SO2 emissions too frequently? Yes. Sierra Club has done measurements and determined that one, one out of every three to four days, the level of SO2 is, well, I don't know, I don't have the instrument.
Okay. This is public here. We're going to hear from him. We'll have comments after we get them public.
So we know that the SO2 is too high every three to four days. And some of those times, it's three and a half times higher than the safe levels established by the EPA. The third thing is, does the agency have the authority to set a numeric limit more stringent than they currently have? And the answer to that is yes. As a matter of fact, the agency's own rules require more stringent guidelines or regulations, if necessary, in order to prevent the violation of an air quality standard. And EPA has set that standard. And finally, does Duke Energy have the ability to meet the revised limit? And the answer is yes. They have the scrubbers installed, and they could use low sulfur coal. Finally, this board should know that there are other communities in North Carolina that have tighter air quality standards than the board is proposing for Duke right now. Why not here? Why not have Asheville have standards that meet EPA regulations? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Yes, sir.
I moved to Asheville for the Clean Mountain Air.
Give your name again, I'm sorry. Name where you're from again.
I'm sorry.
You gave it early, but let's get it to the record.
Bruce Clark. And I hike and bike in the Bend Creek area, and as I pedal to the top of the ridge above Bend Creek and look across the valley to Skyland and Arden, and there's a stack belching out sulfur dioxide. We bikers and hikers expect a safe limit of 61.7 pounds per hour per generating unit to not be exceeded. That is the healthy human limit. The scientific community has the equipment to measure this, but we don't have a way to bring it into the hearing to show it to you. And we apologize for that. Governor McCrory, who retired from Duke after 28 years, might be okay with Duke's performance, but I, as a customer, paying for Duke to be in business, am not okay. I'm not okay with what they have done with the coal ash spills into our rivers, and I'm not okay with what they want to do to our air with this outrageous permit request of 80 times the safe limit. So I support your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, y'all, your front rows, keep moving. Keep moving down. No, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. Keep going. You're perfect, thanks.
Hi, I'm Stogail Solomon Canty, and I am still from Weaverville. I applaud on some level, you know, to be open-minded about not being able to pinpoint the cause of a disease, but science in this case is saying sulfur dioxide isn't good for you. And if it has been documented, as it has been, by the EPA, then I trust those experts. And I would not want one single person more to suffer from asthma, respiratory difficulties, or other impairments of their health by the failure of our government to take action against a known problem. We have an obligation to safeguard the health of our communities. And if you don't take action and somebody else gets sick, shame on you. You have the ability to take action. Worst-case scenario, gee, we're healthier than we needed to be. Isn't that terrible? But let's do something rather than not do something and bemoan increased disease. So thank you for having the hearing, and thank you for having the guts to write the letter and take a stand. That's what you're here for.
Thank you, Ms. Canty. Yes, sir.
Thank you again. My name is J.D. Diefenbach. Mr. Friar, I'm glad you came back, because I, too, spent many a time up in Hazen in Harlan, and I've been to hell for certain.
Have you looked at Hazen and Harlan lately, sir?
They've come a long way. They've come a long way.
Right, for him to do that.
Back from when I was there. EPA has delegated the DAC the authority to enforce federal laws and regulations dealing with air pollution in North Carolina. After reviewing the Western North Carolina Regional Air Quality Agency's minimum health-based standards dated November 14, 2011, I questioned their authority to supersede and lessen the existing federal minimum standards. I do, however, agree that they do have the legal authority to apply a reasonable stricter standard. And that's what I do expect, and I appreciate you all, if you all will send that up and support these minimum, these standards. It also is in violation of executive order. Stand by just a second. Executive Order 13045, Protection of Children from Environmental Health and Safety Risks. The proposed draft has the potential to affect children and elderly. EPA and DAC are required to evaluate the environmental health and safety effects of the planned rule permit on children and explain why the planned SO2 increases are preferable over other potentially effective and reasonable alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, J.D. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lisa McQuarreter from, from east Asheville. Just a couple of quick comments is that often, before people, you know, people are considering moving to this area, and they come here for hikes, and a lot of times I get the question, well, what's the air quality like here? And in the past, I've had to say, well, I think it's mostly pretty good. Sometimes we get some pollution blowing in from Tennessee, which of course is beyond our control. And so I'm glad that you guys are looking at, you know, the regulations on the sulfur dioxide, because this is something within our control. And we have a lot of people, you know, historically Asheville has brought people to this area for its clean air, and so I would hate for us to fall down on the job on that. And the other thing is that I work in healthcare. I see people with chronic obstructive pulmonary disease every day, and it's just a large number of people. I'm just sure that the medical community would, would really stand behind you in limiting the sulfur dioxide emissions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQuarreter. Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Fireman. I'm a retired medical doctor. I helped Commissioner Newman and several other people in this room pass the Clean Smoke Tax Act. I practiced 25 years in Winston-Salem, moved up here 15 years ago, practiced a little in Polk County, practiced a little in, at Franklin, and about seven years at Spruce Prime Community Hospital, now known as Blue Ridge. One of the last events in my long medical career was the failure to resuscitate a strapping middle-aged man with asthma who was on a bike ride on the parkway. He died from his asthma. Not everybody just gets an inhaler and survives. Sometimes people were admitted to the hospital, and sometimes they die. What we have here before us now is a choice. The Air Quality Board is going to make a recommendation, and I hope they follow the recommendations that were given by you in this letter and do a scientifically-based one. Because we're not going to know by instruments or models until 2023 whether or not the air meets the 75 parts per billion that the EPA says is a safe level. The study that was done was clear in using EPA-regulated models, Duke Energy's own numbers for how much sulfur dioxide was emitted per unit of BTUs of energy, and the weather from the Asheville Airport. So that the modeling data is really clear. But we're not going to know until 2022 what EPA guidelines are going to say. Are they going to say we're going to model? Or are we going to have instruments around the county? So what we're doing is gambling. If we don't write a good permit, if the air bar doesn't write a science-based permit, then we're not going to be able to know for seven years. And how many individuals, childrens, adults, elderly people, are going to be sacrificed in that time with poor health, respiratory illness, and possibly death. So... So, I really commend this commission on writing a strong recommendation to its air board, and I hope the air board follows this recommendation that the county commissioners make. And in seven years, when we have monitors or modeling, we'll know that we did a good job today. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Fireman. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Maddox?
Hi, I'm Judy Maddox from Lester. Again, I'm still chair of the local Sierra Club. And what we are asking for is a clear standard, the standard that the EPA has set, not what the permit written five years ago and even 10 years ago by the Western North Carolina Air Quality Board wrote, and that has just been promulgated forward. We're asking for this clear standard. Now, questions of whether it should be monitored or whether it should be modeled will be questions that will be decided over the next couple of years. But we want the standard now to have safety now. And we appreciate you looking to protect your citizens, us, right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Any other public comment on this topic? Yes, sir, Mr. Yelton?
One of those pesky scientists. You know, your history defies you. I've sat here, and I've heard a commissioner say, we want to let the experts look at land overlays. And now, I've not heard one word out of the Western North Carolina Air Pollution Control Board on what their recommendations are. So, in one time, we use the experts and the board; the next time, we tell the board what to do. That's not consistent. The other thing is, the reason the TB sanatorium are located out next to the old Oatine VA Hospital was at one time, we thought ozone was good, because ozone's O3. And we thought if you had tuberculosis, O3 was good for you. So, we brought people here because the Evergreens make a lot of ozone, not realizing that ozone was an irritant. That's how science changes. Now, I did a study of ozone with the Western North Carolina Air Pollution Control Board a long time ago. And I'd like to point out that it wasn't Governor McCrory that did this. It was a Deener run by the Democratic administration, because it's all political. We can see it up there, four, three votes. And what happened was, the ozone concentration was the highest at 5:00 in the morning, when they monitored it by the hour, which meant that when it cooled down, all the ozone produced here in the summertime from the tourist trade and the lawn mowers and the leaf blowers, whoever the idiot was that developed the leaf blower, you go to a motel, gnaw, the next morning, gnaw. And so, all they did is a way to buy gas and make a noise. So, they found the ozone concentration was higher at 5:00 in the morning. So, you know what the Deener did? They started using eight-hour averages to kill that peak. That's what modeling shows you. That's how you can play with the numbers. And if EPA is so darn good, how come we got people dying in South Asheville from trichloroethane in the ground, spreading all over the place? How come we're putting up with that? And I'd like to see the Sierra Club and all these people that come up here and spoke out about air pollution start looking at the people that are actually dying out there when the county has an attorney on staff and his partner was part-owner in that business out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Yes, sir, Mr. Brain?
Ken Brain from Lester. One of the things that we do know is that higher levels of sulfur dioxide definitely contribute to breathing problems for people with asthma, for the elderly, people with lung disease, and things like that. I grew up in a household where my mother suffered from asthma. I know what I got to see, the pain that she went through trying to catch a breath, trying to take a breath. Yeah, we can wait for five to seven years until we figure out whether we want to use monitoring or models to do it. But people are breathing the air between now and then. I commend you for approving this letter and setting the safe level. The current proposed limits, Duke could turn off their scrubbers totally and meet the standard that's currently in the draft permit. That's not right. None of us would like to see that happen. So, I ask you to please consider the people that have asthma, the people that have breathing problems, and do the right thing now. Let's encourage, let's set the standard. We know which something Duke can meet without a big expenditure. I simply ask them to run their scrubbers at a more efficient level and to use a little bit lower sulfur coal, and they could clearly and easily meet this standard and make air safe for everybody. So, I would like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Any other public comment on the topic? If none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:50. There has been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion among the board?
Can I ask a question of the gentlemen that are here from the Air Quality?
You may.
If, I guess, both of them come up, because I don't know... I would just like for you to explain the permitting process a little bit more to me and, you know, about, you know, can you change a permitting process? I mean, what exactly is your function in this to help me understand this more?
Sure, I'll do the best I can. I'm usually not the representative doing this. But typically, well, typically, a Title V permit is renewed every five years. So, we're in the middle of that process now, where we're reviewing a permit. Typically, when we review that permit, there will have been changes, possibly to the equipment over the past five years that needs to be moved from one section of the permit to the other. That is one thing we do. We will also look over the current regulations to see if there's anything that needs to be applied. What a lot of people are talking about right now, of course, is the EPA SO2 regulation, which is, I say, a new standard. 2010's not super new. But in 2010, the EPA published the standard. It's a new one-hour standard. It's a lot more strict than the standard prior to it. Up until 2013, the EPA was only looking at really large SO2 sources, larger than, much larger than, actually, Duke is right now. And, oh, excuse me, I'm nervous. But those sources that, those large sources, they were going to say whether they are in attainment or not. But for the smaller sources of SO2, EPA just basically kind of said, well, you're unclassifiable. So, the EPA got sued by the Sierra Club, actually. Eventually, they came to an agreement on a timeline in which the EPA is going to determine whether or not areas like Buncombe County, because we have a large SO2 source like Duke, will be in attainment or not for this standard. And the standard being, you know, as been mentioned before, 75 parts per million. So, the Title V renewal process is usually, is not a time when you're necessarily going to be inserting modeling before the process of approve, or the process I'm talking about is the air quality management process. And, you know, once the EPA and the Sierra Club agreed on a timeline, we're in the middle of that timeline. People have talked about it before. By this January, we have to make a decision, we, along with North Carolina DAQ, about how we're going to address how we deal with this standard. That decision is going to be either modeling, which has been discussed. That is what the Sierra Club has brought to our attention in February. They did their own modeling, using, you know, as they mentioned, weather data from Asheville and upper data from Greensboro. That model is a prediction. It's not necessarily what is the truth at the ground. It is a prediction. It is a very useful tool, but it does not necessarily mean that the health standard is being exceeded. It only means that it could be being exceeded, because honestly, we don't know without measuring it. So, the other way that we could possibly go down this path is by actually putting monitors, which will measure the amount of SO2. That means there's no more guesswork. You will actually be able to measure, here is the amount of SO2. So, by January, that's a decision that will be made. We're either going to go the monitoring route or the modeling route. Then, there's more timeline after that. You know, it gets kind of long. Within that next year, we would have to work, if modeling is chose, we would have to work with Duke. And this is, this is a process that's happening everywhere, by the way. It's not just, you know, in Asheville. There are, like, five plants that Sierra Club modeled in North Carolina. So, everyone's going through this process. But the roadmap has already been set for us, and that's why the permit is like it is. And I wanted to make one more mention, the 2.3 million BTU per hour mention. That is a, that's a rule that is for every single combustion unit. So, that's why that limit is in there. But there are other parts of the permit that would never allow Sierra or Duke to emit that amount at all. There's the Clean Air Interstate Rule, which basically, if you average that out on an hour, it'd be 0.39 pounds. So, that's much lower than 2.3. Also, MATS, which is the mercury intoxic standard, there's going to be a 0.2 limit. It's not, it's a limit either SO2 or HCl. But regardless, if they comply with MATS, SO2 is going to be lower. So, the standards aren't nearly as high as ever before.
Based on the age of the floors?
But anyway, you know, I tried to fit in a lot. It really is complicated.
Thank you. It is complicated.
But that is why the permit is the way it is now. There is going to be a time that we're going to have to figure out exactly what limits either need to be in the permit, or we'll know exactly how much SO2 is being emitted. And that way, we will know whether or not we're in attainment for the standard. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do have some questions. Do you want to catch your breath? Who, we're talking about standards and numbers and modeling and data, right?
Right.
Um, which agency must you, which agency's recommendations or requirements must you follow by law? Who are you legally bound to?
The EPA regulations, certainly, and also state regulations.
So, if you do anything outside of the EPA's regulations, what will happen to your agency?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
We receive delegation from the federal EPA. If we don't follow their protocol, we'll lose our delegation, meaning we won't have enforcement here.
Okay.
Either the state Division of Air Quality or the federal EPA would then take enforcement authority.
So, does your agency have any subjective input, or is it all regulated via EPA?
Yeah, I mean, we can both agree that, I mean, it's definitely not subjective at all. It's regulated by what, yeah, basically, by EPA and their delegation, and also whatever state rules we've adopted. And in this instance, just like, I mean, with the permit that's going up, the EPA is going to be reviewing everything that we send to them. They have their own review process. So, matter of fact, all the public comments that we're getting are going to be sent to the EPA as well. So, they'll be part of the review process.
Yeah, these Title V permits that we're discussing have to be approved by the federal EPA as well as us. So, they'll be reviewed by the EPA and a...
So, the final, I'm sorry, final approval of this permit that we are contemplating sending a letter to you about actually has to meet EPA's approval?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any other questions while these nice gentlemen are...
So, tell me again why y'all didn't just adopt the standards that are coming for this thing, because it seems like a no-brainer to me.
The standard is adopted.
Then why are you, so help me understand what the deviation is here?
The standard, I mean, is the standard.
Right.
It's the same across the U.S.
Right.
The question, or the confusion, I guess, is to prove whether or not we're meeting the standard, whether we're going to follow modeling or monitoring. And like James was discussing, the deadline for that is January of the coming year. And if monitoring is determined to use monitoring, three years' worth of monitoring data has to be collected in order for it to be valid to prove whether you're attaining the standard or not.
But of course, that model, I mean, that monitoring data will be real-time, so it's not like you have to wait till the end of the three years to have an idea of what kind of emissions you're having. As soon as you turn the monitor on, you'll start knowing what your emissions are, right?
And monitoring data throughout the states available on the website, real-time, like an hour behind.
And part of your processes that y'all utilize to come up with your final determinations is input from the public as well, because there's some, there is some...
We have to address every comment that's been made at our public comments, our public comment hearing. And actually, those comments have to be given to the EPA, and then they have to review that as well.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm just still struggling to understand why the, if we know that the standard is, the facet, the part in the permit that regulates the CO, right?
Well, I guess some of the, it's SO2. I guess...
I mean, yes, so, excuse me.
I guess part of the problem, this is probably the first time that this approach, the EPA has allowed this approach to verify whether you are meeting a standard or not modeling. Typically, it's always been monitoring. So, this is a little sticky and new for everybody, basically.
Gotcha, gotcha. New territory for y'all.
Certainly.
Yeah, so...
And I guess, I think what maybe you're getting at is why aren't we trying to maybe apply these limits right now? And part of the reason is that that would be outside of the timeline that I'm talking about and really doesn't say anything or not about our attainment plan, which ends up being a plan that has to be approved by the EPA. This is kind of outside of it. The, and again, that timeline is what puts us on the pathway of having a plan to make attainment. And, you know, given, like I said, the choices of modeling or monitoring, that's what we're working with the state with right now to determine, so...
So, y'all are worried about being able to measure it. That's what's got y'all worried?
No, we're not worried about it. We'll have to procure the monitors, if that's the path we choose to follow. I mean, we don't have monitors out in the field. And this is not just us we're discussing. I mean, there are lots of areas, when they lowered that standard, the standard had been so high previously, you know, we have to have money to purchase monitors and to pay personnel to run the monitors. And, you know, the standard was so high, there was no, we had done historic monitor, I mean, had historic monitoring data, well, we knew we weren't approaching the standard. And this is for areas across the United States. But when they lowered the standard, we have to prove whether we're meeting it. And like I say, this isn't just us. There's a lot of areas in the United States that's facing this same issue. And then, it's coming down to how are you going to prove that you're meeting the standard? Do you want to use modeling or monitoring?
They basically took a standard that was higher.
And lowered the...
And lowered the number. So, now, you're not sure. You feel like you're still in the comfortable area, but you don't, you don't have the tool to do it with.
We have to be able to prove that.
Right. You have no tool to do it with.
And you don't, and you don't know.
Yeah, that's the answer, is we do not know whether or not we're...
I got you.
But you have a process in place moving forward to get where you need to be.
Exactly.
Well, I have a question, if I could. If, do you have a, let's say you go with the modeling. Do you have, do you challenge or feel like the Sierra Club's modeling that they did is wrong, or there's flaws in it? Or is it just a matter of whether you're going to do modeling versus monitoring?
Yeah, they've used approved monitor, I mean, models. That's not in question. Their modeling, their modeling data's not in question. Their monitoring is just more accurate. I mean...
That way, it's, you got it.
Exactly. It's cut and dried.
Yeah.
You may go either way at this point.
Modeling's just a tool to predict.
Okay.
I mean, you know, just like modeling weather. I mean...
Yeah, you typically actually want models to be a little conservative, I mean, to estimate a little higher so that they're a useful tool. If they end up estimating lower, then you'd never want to use them. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
You always want it to slightly overestimate.
And I think the modelers would agree that models are more conservative, meaning they would, they would probably be higher.
They would overpredict.
Exactly.
They would tend to overpredict.
Okay.
By how much? Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to make any statement to saying that, you know, we're in or not in. in or not in, but that's just what models do. But like I say, we have a process that the EPA's laid out for us, and that's, that's what we're following, and that's not why there's any changes on the permit.
Thank you. I have just one last comment on this, and I appreciate, appreciate you guys being here as well. And, you know, obviously, as I said in the, in my opening comments, there are a lot of, this is very tech, there are a lot of very technical issues associated with these kind of permits, and a whole lot of people who work full-time on looking at these kind of questions from a technical and legal standpoint. So this issue does not get solved tonight. There's a whole bunch of layers of process of different agencies and experts who look at this stuff. But part of what, you know, part of what I found compelling about, about the request that came from the community for us to speak to this issue is that, in some ways, the kind of actual options for, you know, the level of emissions that are going to come out of this facility are, are really, are really too. You know, the Ray Payers of North Carolina invested a lot of money in installing these really effective scrubbers on the, on the power plant. That's why it's 80% or more cleaner now than it was less than a decade ago. So that's great, and, but there are some operational, and whatever happens, you know, that, most of, the vast majority of the, the benefits of that are, are kind of baked in. Like, we've got them, our air's a lot cleaner today as a, as a result of that. But there are some operational choices that can be made that influence exactly, you know, how efficiently those systems are run. So, so that's an operational, you know, device that, that can make sure that they're, you know, even, you know, what the emission levels are. And then the other is this decision about whether to purchase higher sulfur or lower sulfur, lower sulfur fuel. And that's simply a choice that can be made. They're both available. The, the lower sulfur fuel is a little bit more expensive. I mean, that is, that is, that's a real thing. So, so to me, though, those are, you know, I think that there's, as, as the folks here said, there's good reasons for these models to be conservative, and there's good reasons for all of us to be conservative, too, when it comes to making decisions that affect public health on a, on a broad scale. So, and the, and the one other point that, you know, in terms of talking to folks in the environmental community, and David Brigham from the, the Air Agency this week, and folks from Duke, one of the other points that everyone seemed to agree on, because there are some differences of opinion on, on some of these items, was that the standards that are talked about, that are requested here, are standards that were in fact actively being achieved after the scrubbers were installed and the utility was using lower sulfur fuel. So this isn't some sort of, you know, we're asking you to do something that's never been done. It's actually just kind of running it in the way that it was run, you know, in, very recently. So for all those reasons, I think it's, I think it's a good suggestion. A lot of other folks are going to look at this after, after the public comment period is over, but I think it's just, you know, I feel good about weighing in on encouraging the, you know, the airing on the side of protecting public health. It'll be great when there are more monitors out in the ground to show exactly what's happening in different parts of the region to make sure the standards are met. If we're over-complying, the utility will have options to ratchet back. And think, you know, there's, adjustments can be made as we get more and more on-the-ground information in the years to come, years to come. But I think airing on the side of making sure we're protecting public health is a, is a good place to be. So thanks again for everyone considering the proposal.
And James and I like clean air, too.
But it, it goes back to the same fact, Mr. Newman. This, as you said, they cleaned this up 80%, at least 80%. I've been here for 50 years, so there was two stacks out there. They've taken both of them down. All you see now coming out is steam. I've seen people say they smell sulfur and candler. No, they smell champion and candler. They just hadn't lived here long enough. That's all I can say. But the other fact is, these gentlemen are set to do a job. It's not our job to tell them how to do their job. We're here to protect not a small group of people, we're here to protect a whole county. And the whole county is, you know, I'm, you know, if we want to get rid of this, let's go nuclear. Let's, let's see if Duke can put a nuclear plant, because South Carolina's getting ready to get rid of their last coal plant, and they'll be 100% nuclear. So do we want a nuclear plant to get rid of the nuclear waste? Or do we want what we have at the present time? I think everybody in this room enjoys going home, turning their lights on, the lights on in here, the whole package, and our air right now, and I mean, it's like I said, I've been here 50 years. You used to have the windows open all the time. You know, the air was, was cooler at certain times. And I appreciate Duke Perry for, for stepping up and doing what they're trying to do to help the people. But it goes back to the same thing. You two gentlemen, and Mr. Brigham, and the other two ladies, what's her name?
Ashley and Betsy.
Yeah.
Ashley Fethersone and Betsy Brown, just to get some...
After I saw this letter, I, I had the opportunity to meet with James and Mr. Brigham and, and Ashley, and, you know, to try to have an understanding, no different than the understanding I've tried to bring tonight to the people. If you don't have the tool, you can't measure. And right now, you're telling me you don't have the tool to measure what's there until the EPA, which is the big head on, on the dragon, tells you that, and, and we can give, then, then the government and the state will make sure that you have that product. If you try to step out of line, they could take this whole package away from you in this county. Is that what I understood a little while ago from you?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I'm against us sending you a letter to have something done that we can't do to start with, because it would jeopardize something to do with your job and air quality of this county, because somebody else would be taking over. And I do trust you gentlemen and ladies that work that.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think everyone's had a chance to comment on this, so I'd ask that we move ahead with the vote.
I have further comments to make.
Okay.
I have concerns, as everybody else does, regarding air quality. I grew up here, and I'm raising my children here, so I think we can sort of put that aside. This letter came, this, this exact wording of this letter came from the Asheville City Council, and I find it cheap and unprofessional to cut and paste another governing body's work without express written consent. I don't know that we even had verbal consent. I also have found some of the exact wording in private letters from, from private individuals. And I have found on Mountain Tru's website and the Sierra Club's website, some of this exact language that we have in our letter. I don't mean number language, I mean exact wording. And it's here if, if we need to look at it. So again, I, I find it cheap and unprofessional for this board of elected officials to cut and paste in this manner. I'm concerned that we are spending the people's time and money on political activism. I want to know, you know, are we a board of elected officials to do, or are we a political action committee?
Okay, under the rules, we, if, someone who has not spoken has a right to speak after the call for the question. Has anyone not spoken, you would have a right to speak. If you've spoken, you would not have a right to speak. On this issue, if you've spoken, I don't think you have a right at this point.
I have not spoken.
Okay. I will go with Belcher and then Jones, and they tell me you've not spoken.
Okay, okay. You know, I've listened to everything. I've looked at the letter. I, I do think this is a letter from the chairman. If the chairman wanted to send the letter, chairman can sign the letter, send the letter. By bringing this letter before us and, and this discussion, it becomes, it does become pretty political. And we do not want to be, I don't want to be, you know, painted as someone that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I am a clean coal fan, I am a clean air fan, and I am a, I love having my lights on, and I want my children to breathe good air. I do not understand all the information in this. I don't know that I could sit, sit down for a few days, honestly, and understand all the information in this. And I will, I will not be supporting this letter for that reason, because I cannot just, I cannot weigh all this information, the accuracy of this information, in order for me to put my signature on that or on anything, I have to be 100% that I'm representing it with truth from myself personally and the people that I represent. So therefore, I will, I will not be for this letter.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate your, your feedback and your expertise. And thanks all the citizens that care about our, our environment and the health of our community. And I apologize if you have felt insulted along the way, so, because your voice is very valued, and you, as a taxpayer, are valued as well. My degree is in, it's not in political science, it's in public health. And, and my interest in being an elected official has to do with simply that, being able, when we have the opportunities to weigh in and stand up for kids that can't breathe, and older people that are struggling for their breath. I can't imagine what it would be not to be able to breathe. And absolutely, we'll, we'll always want to err on the side of how can we make things easier for people in terms of breathing and their health and better. So I have no qualms. I also don't understand every facet of what you fellows said, but I am so fine with saying, writing you a letter and saying, our people matter, and we want y'all to really take care of their health, and here's some ideas. I also think y'all probably really appreciate when two governmental bodies are in sync, and then they're kind of talking, talking on the same, the same page. And I, and I can assure you that the authors of the original letter are absolutely fine with us utilizing some of their approach. So I feel like that is a distraction, and there was some, there were some cheap shots made around that. But, but the bottom line is, we are a community that values our environment, we are a community that values our, the health, and, and there's times where you have to step out, and you have to go into the unknown and be a little uncertain about things, because like, like one of the very wonderful citizens said today, what's the worst that's going to happen? We're going to be, we're going to be cleaner than we thought we would. We're going to be healthier than we thought we would. So I, and this is, this, frankly, this is, I didn't know it when I got up to this morning, but this is one of the reasons why I ran for Buncombe County Commissioner, to be able to weigh in on a matter that is critical for our people's public health. And I'm happy, thank you, Commissioner Newman, for building all this for us and really talking to a lot of different parties, and presenting it in a very reasonable and non, just a very conciliatory way. And so I'll be supporting it.
All right, any commissioner has not spoken, I will recognize, because the call to question has been given, and I think under our law, anybody that has not spoken gets a right to. Otherwise, I'm going to call the question. All right. All those in favor of the resolution by Commissioner Newman, and seconded, I think, by Commissioner Frost, does that work, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, that's right. Oh, no, no.
Jones.
All in favor of recommending the chairman, authorizing the chairman to sign the letter, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries four to three. Commissioner Belcher, DeBruel, and Frye against. Our next order of business...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next order of business will be the public hearings on the rezoning request. First one is Biltmore Company. We have Debbie Trumpy here to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Biltmore Company and West Range LLC have applied to rezone three parcels from Commercial Service District to the Conference Center Resort District. The property encompasses over 6,000 acres, and it contains the Biltmore estate and its related uses. The Conference Center Resort District was adopted in February of 2014 and did not exist at the time the estate was initially zoned. The zoning of CS, which was the best fit at the time, did not properly accommodate the uses that exist in this type of large resort. The Buncombe County Land Use Plan 2013 update recommended that large conference centers and resort facilities be zoned more appropriately through a conference center resort district, and indicated that the facilities considered for this zoning should be at least 100 acres. The Planning Department recommends approval of the request as a proposed map amendment is consistent with the Land Use Plan 2013 update. And the Planning Board held a public hearing on this application April 7, 2014, where there was no public comment. The Planning Board found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan, is reasonable and in the public interest, and the Board recommended approval of the rezoning in a unanimous vote. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Trumpy before we start our public hearing on the rezoning request for Biltmore Company, CS to CR? Thank you. If none, I'll open the public hearing in this matter at 7:21. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this rezoning request? If none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 7:22. Is there any discussion among the Commissioners or a motion, and/or a motion to accept the rezoning request?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, that we find that the request is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
And a motion by Vice Chair Belcher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frost. Is there any further discussion of the motion or the pending rezoning request? If none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of granting the request as submitted and articulated by Ms. Trumpy and the Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that rezoning request is granted by seven to zero vote. Thank you. Next, Ms. Trumpy will tell, we're going to combine two requests that are adjoining, I believe. We're going to have one hearing, going to have two votes. Ms. Trumpy, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Zach Penlin applied to rezone two tax lots, and I, as the zoning administrator, initiated a rezoning of another lot that is adjacent to one of these parcels, and it does contain a commercial use on that property.
Can I, can I ask a question on that before? When, if you're, as the zoning administrator...
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that if you see that, you know, there's a property nearby that basically needs to be included in the same thing, that you make that determination, go ahead and request it to the Planning Board? Is that basically it?
Generally, it would be to avoid a spot zoning, or if there is something obvious like this, it's adjacent and in already that current use.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. The applications are for three parcels, which total 6.45 acres. They're zoned R3 residential currently, and the applications are to rezone to CS Commercial Service. The properties are located, two on the north side and one on the south side of US 70 Highway, near its intersection with Old Lidle Cove Road, and the properties are adjacent to the CS zoning district. Two of the lots contain current, currently contain commercial buildings, and one of the lots, the one on the south side of the highway, is undeveloped currently. The surrounding area contains commercial uses, manufactured home parks, and vacant lots, and are zoned EMP, CS, and R3. The Planning Department recommends approval of the request as the amendment is consistent with the Buncombe County Land Use Plan, as the 2013 update highly suggests that commercial development be located within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors and to public water and sewer infrastructure. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the applications April 20. One person made public comment, and it was informational, it was not to voice opposition or approval of the rezoning requests. The Planning Board found that the proposed rezonings would be consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest, and the Planning Board recommended approval of the rezonings in a unanimous vote. And again, I'd take questions if you have any.
Any questions for our public hearing on? And we will combine the public hearing and have two separate votes.
Can I make a little comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to commend the Penlin family for what they've done for the Swan and O Valley, and I'm happy to see them here.
All right. I will declare the public hearing on the zoning request by Zach Penlin and the zoning request by the zoning administrator. request by the zoning administrator jointly held open at 7:26. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on either one of these rezoning requests? If none, I'll declare the public hearings closed at 7:27. Is there a motion? Let's take the Zach Penlin request first. Is there a motion to approve the request as noted?
So moved because it's consistent with the land use plan.
Okay, is there a second to Commissioner Frost's motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBruel. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The rezoning request is granted by a seven to zero vote. Is there a motion on the rezoning request by the zoning administrator, adjacent property?
I make a motion to approve, find this request is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
Is there a second? There's been a motion by Vice Chair Belcher, a second by Commissioner DeBruel. Is there any discussion of that zoning request? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is granted by a seven to zero vote. Next, we have, uh-
Can we take five? Can we, can we recess?
Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
It's the bathroom, Greg.
Okay, five minutes. Let's, let's be back at 7:35.
Thank you.